Welcome to Glendale's CDBG Advisory Committee Special Meeting today, March 1st. And the first item is roll call.
Certainly. Committee members Armenian.
Present.
Arabian.
Here.
Manukian.
Present.
Vice Chair Vedisian.
Present.
And Chair Quinones Gabrielian.
Present.
The agenda for the March 1st, 2024 Special Meeting of the CDBG Advisory Committee was posted on or before Tuesday, February 27, 2024, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Hey, next.
Item two is minutes at A is approval of the minutes of the October 23rd, 2023 CDBG Advisory Committee Special Meeting.
Great. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make the motion. Second.
Wonderful. Any corrections, edits? Right? Seeing that, roll call, please.
Sure. Committee members Armenian.
Yes.
Arabian.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Vice Chair Vedisian.
Yes.
Chair Quinones Gabrielian.
Yes.
Item three is oral communications. I don't have any cards or callers. Okay, item four, reports for information only. At A is second quarter performance report for fiscal year 2023-2024 social services programs.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And so we turn it over to our staff member, Ms. Cabarian.
Good morning, Chair Quinones Gabrielian, members of the advisory committee. Today we have before you the mid-year report for our public social services agencies, performance and expenditure rate report. This is from July 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023. We'll start with Essentia Homeless Outreach Case Management Program. This year, they've proposed to serve 35 individuals. They've already served 17 through the mid-year. They've been awarded $25,000 in funding and they're about 40, I'm sorry, 54% expenditure rate on their grant. So their first outcome is by June 30th, they are to, they have 25 out of 35 individuals that will be contacted by the homeless outreach program and enroll in Essentia's access center. At this time, they're at 17. Their goal is 25 and they're 68% accomplished. Their next goal, 13 out of 25 individuals who are enrolled in the Essentia Access Center will access mainstream resources such as food stamps, job training, et cetera. Their mid-year status is seven. Their goal is 13, so they're right at the midway point at 54% accomplishment. Next, we'll go to Catholic Charities of LA. This is the Loaves and Fishes Program. The proposed number that they will serve is 35 households. They've already served 11. They've been awarded $35,000 this year and they're at about 35% expenditure rate. Their first outcome, 35 households that are served by the program, of the 35, 26 will receive aid in the form of goods from the pantry or rental assistance or other assistance programs within three months of entering this program. Their mid-year status is 11. Their goal is 26, so they're already 42% accomplished. Their second goal is 35 households served by the program, or 11 households will maintain an active link to auxiliary services. Their mid-year status is 11. Their goal is 11, so they're 100% accomplished. Next, we have Glendale Youth Alliance. This is the youth employment program. Their proposed number to be served is 20 youth. Their actual number served is 20, so they're already at 100%. They've been awarded $20,000 and have already expended 50%. Their first outcome is that 20 youth served, all 20 will earn income by working a minimum of 100 hours in this year. Their mid-year status is 20 and their goal was 20, so they're already 100% accomplished by mid-year. The second goal, of the 20 youth served, six will be referred to community agencies based on their individual need. So far, their status is seven. They only needed to serve six, so they're over 117% accomplished. Home Again LA Housing Support for Homeless Families. Their proposed number is 30 households which would be served. Their actual number served right now is 13. They've been awarded $15,000 and have already expended 56% of that. By June 30th of 2024, they should have 30 unduplicated households served by the program. 67% will be enrolled in crisis housing within the 30 days of connecting to Home Again LA. Their mid-year status right now is 13. Their goal was 20, so they're at 65% accomplishment rate. The second goal, 30 unduplicated households served by the program. 20 will transition into stable housing within 12 months. They already have a mid-year status of 13. Their goal is 20, 65% accomplished. Door of Hope. Door of Hope Mental Health Case Management Services for Survivors of Domestic Violence. Their proposed number to be served is 32 participants. Their actual number is 18. Their funds awarded, $22,000 and they have expended 54% of their funds. Their first outcome, of the 32 adults, children and teens served by the program, 24 out of those 32 will report improved mental health as indicated by decreased anxiety and/or depression in adults and increased socio-emotional growth and coping skills in children by way of assessments by the June 30th, 2024 end date. Their mid-year status is two. Their goal is 24. They're at 8% accomplishment rate. Of the 22 adults served by the program, 16 will increase their income or savings as measured by case managers on a quarterly basis. Their mid-year status is three. Their goal is 16. They're at 19% accomplishment rate. To highlight this particular agency, they do need at least the more than mid-year point to meet their outcomes and their goals because some of these, some of these families that go into the transitional housing program, they don't come in on July 1st. Some of them arrive on, in October and they start these programs and their outcomes really will be measured by the year end. And we've always seen that happen with Door of Hope. Housing Rights Center. Housing Rights Center proposes to serve 350 households. They're already at 188 households served mid-year. Their funds awarded, here it's 10,150. As a reminder to the committee, Housing Rights Center gets funding both from Community Services and Parks Department as well as Community Development's Housing Division. So they get a little over $20,000. They're at 48.69% expenditure rate. Housing Rights Center's first outcome is hosting two Housing Rights Center workshops for the city of Glendale. One for tenants and one for landlords. The, I'm sorry, the landlord's workshop was already completed in November and, well, let me go back to the outcome. The measurement of the workshop will show the effectiveness of the workshop using survey evaluation forms and demonstrating that 85% of the attendees will rate the workshop as useful. They've already had one workshop and their goal is two, so they're 50% accomplished. Second goal, Housing Rights Center will file seven fair housing complaints by Glendale residents and successfully conciliate three fair housing open cases for investigation by June 30th, 2024. At the mid-year status, none have been conciliated yet. The goal is three, so at this point in time, it's zero accomplishment. But again, this is another agency that needs until the end of the fiscal year because these fair housing claims can go long in the sense of legal timing and all of that. So we know for a fact that at this point in time, by February, in the February period, three of the claims are almost at the rate of conciliation. We just were waiting for it to be official and they didn't want to include that because they felt that it wasn't there at the mid-year point.
A question. I see that we gave them 10,150. I thought the minimum was 20, but I can't remember. Is, there is another organization that can help us provide those 20?
So, so basically for Housing Rights Center, the other $10,000 comes from the Housing Division. There, I believe it's their Section 8 fund. And they, just like CDBG, have to affirmatively further fair housing. And due to that, we both have to chip in funds to have the fair housing services program.
We chip in 10,000?
We chip in 10,000 in housing. It's a 50-50 split. I think we chipped in $150 more this particular year.
Thank you.
Shall I move on?
Yes, please. Thank you.
The next agency is Armenian Relief Society of Western USA. This is the Community Outreach Project. Proposed number to be served is 85 individuals. The actual number served is 94 individuals. The funds awarded is $60,000 and they're at about 51% expenditure rate. First outcome, of the 90 seniors enrolled in the ESL classes, 90% will demonstrate improved English language competency by 40% determined through a pre and post test. Their mid-year status is 44. Their goal is 81. They're already 54% accomplished. Second outcome, of the 40 individuals who receive employment services, 55% or 22 individuals will secure employment within three months of intake. At the mid-year, 12 have. The goal is 22, 55% accomplished. Next, we have Committee for Armenian Students in Public Schools, better known as CASPs. This is the Intervention Prevention Clinical Group Counseling Program. The proposed number to be served, 44 students. The actual number served at this point in time is 19. Funds awarded, 33,000. The expenditure rate at this time is 23, a little over 23%, but again, we always let the committee know that this is a school program, so their year doesn't start until late August, sometimes into September. So they don't start invoicing us until even into October and November.
I'm sorry, Ms. Cabari, it says 43%. You said 23%.
Sorry, it's 20, it should, it should read 20. No. Chair Quinones Gabrielian, the expenditure rate is 23.47%.
Are the outcomes correct?
Oh.
Are the outcomes correct percentages? I'm sorry, I'm looking at the outcomes.
Oh, the outcomes?
Yes, I'm sorry. Funds awarded.
Yes, the outcomes are correct as well.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to double check as well. So going back to CASPs, because they start their program, it's a school, it's based off the school year, not the fiscal year, July 1st, they don't start invoicing the city until September, October, even into November. So that's why the expenditure rate is at 24%. For outcomes, the first outcome, of 44 students served at two sites, 35 will show significantly reduced incidence of aggressive behavior by June 30th, 2024, and this is by way of a pre and post test. The mid-year status is 15, goal is 35. They're already 43% accomplished. Second goal, of the 44 students served at the two sites, 35 will show significant improvement in following directions and academic responsibility by way of a psychologist's notes, progress reports, to show students' progress through the program activities by the end of the fiscal year. Mid-year status is 15. The goal is 35, 43% accomplishment. YWCA of Glendale and Pasadena Mental Health Services for Survivors of Domestic Violence. The proposed number to be served is 25. Their actual number served is 19. Their funds awarded is 24,597. They're already at 64% expenditure rate. Outcome one, of the 15 women, women served by the program, 15 will complete a 12-week support group program by the end of the fiscal year. Their mid-year status is 10. Their goal is 15, 67% accomplishment. Second outcome, of the 10 children served by the program, eight of those children will complete eight individual counseling sessions by June 30th, 2024. At this time, their mid-year status is zero. The goal is eight. They don't have any accomplishment as of December 31st. But again, because this is individual counseling sessions and they need to complete eight, we still have to wait until the year-end results to come in. Armenian Bar Association Pro-Bono Clinic Legal Services. Their proposed number to be served is 12 individuals. Their actual number served is 32 individuals, so they're way over. Funds awarded, $20,000. They've already expended about 63% of their funds. Their first outcome, of the 12 participants served by the clinic, 75% will receive resolution to their matter by the end of the fiscal year. Their mid-year status is 12. Their goal was nine, so they have 133% accomplishment rate. Second outcome, three out of 12 persons who seek legal services from Armenian Bar Association will have learned of the services through social media outreach efforts. At this time, their status is zero. Their goal is three. They don't have an accomplishment on this yet. This is the conclusion of my report. If you have any questions about any of these agencies, which will be coming today, all the agencies are going to be interviewed today and we can ask them additional questions. But we really wanted you to see the mid-year report to gauge where they are with the money that they've been given this particular year.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you for the report.
All right, we move on.
Sure. Next on the agenda is 4B, Review of Financial R ratios for Community Agencies Applying for Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Public Social Services and Capital Improvement Project Funding.
Thank you. Chair Quinones Gabrielian, members of the advisory committee. Each year during the proposal season, we ask that the agencies provide us with a ratio analysis. This analysis is done by the agency's accounting firm. These ratios are submitted and they are verified by staff. We don't look into the numbers in the sense of, do we question the numbers? We don't. We just verify if the financial statement matches the number presented to us. So we want to present to you the CDBG Ratio Analysis Report PowerPoint and give you kind of an overview. So we're now on year five of doing this in-house. And by in-house, I mean by Community Services and Parks. This was usually done by our finance audit department. Basically, the committee direction was to have agencies complete their own ratio calculation tool. It's been going very well. Because we're on year five, it's, and we have very similar agencies coming back, so we have, you know, some consistency there. The agency's public accounting firm calculated three financial ratios: debt ratio, defensive interval, reliance on source of income. Those are the three that are measured. CDBG staff reviews and verifies the calculations and then the ratios are viewed as an additional evaluation tool for the committee. Ratio calculation questions were also included in the staff analysis. So if you look at the strengths and weaknesses analysis, usually at the very end of either strengths or weaknesses, you will see financial statements and things that were not provided or questions that came up. And it's usually verification or clarification questions that come up. So the process, agencies are submitting their own ratios, as we had mentioned. Worksheets and instructions for the ratio calculation tool are placed on the city's website at glendaleca.gov. And of course, this year, we've transitioned into Zoom Grants. There are also the template, instructions and worksheet are also included in Zoom Grants this year. Just like every year, ratio calculation tool presentation was made twice. Once at the CDBG Open House in September of 2023, and then again at the technical support meeting we had with agencies, which was a mandatory technical support meeting. So all the agencies were present and did receive information on ratio calculation tools and how to use that in December. We also provide additional support on a one-to-one basis. So any agency that needs additional help to present to either the accounting firm or we even talk to the accountant directly, we are there for that as well as staff. So we'll start with debt ratio. Debt ratio is total liabilities over un-reliant. Debt ratio is total liabilities over unrestricted net assets. This reflects the proportion of debt a company has relative to its assets. So a ratio less than one is a good sign. It indicates that company has less debt than asset. None of our agencies were out of range in debt ratio. But we did want to highlight, because our staff did notice, some cells on the financial ratio summary may reflect a blank cell with a dash for agencies who have zero liabilities. So if you see a dash in the summary, that means they have no liabilities. Now, some agencies have zeros put in. If it's a zero point, for instance, zero point zero, usually the liability is so small, like a hundred dollars, that it reflects zero. So that's something that I wanted to address to the committee if you have questions on that. I'll go on to defensive interval next. So this is liquid assets over average monthly expenses. This reflects the number of months the organization could operate if funding were to completely stop and no additional funds were received. So the higher ratio reflects an expected longer period of operation if funding were to stop. We only have one agency which is out of range in this, and it's Glendale Youth Alliance. However, Glendale Youth Alliance is also funded by the city's general fund. So we're quite comfortable that they're, they're okay with their defensive interval and they will have additional funds if necessary. Next, we have reliance on source of income. So this is the largest revenue source over the total revenue that they receive. This identifies potential risk as a percentage if the largest source of revenue were to be eliminated or reduced. So the lower percentage indicates less risk if largest revenue source was eliminated. Now, we have two agencies out of range. We have Armenian Engineers and Scientists of America and Armenian Bar Association. However, if you look at their financial statements, they're, the line item states donations slash contributions, grants. So they're all lumped together in one line. They're not broken out. So technically, it's not one revenue source. It could be multiple revenue sources that are coming in, but they're just, they're recognized as one whole. So both have that issue. And then we did actually look into it. So that's just how they do their financial statements. Now, importance of ratio calculations. Agencies turned in their most current financial statements. Most of them turned in their twenty-one and twenty-two fiscal years. And then if they did turn in 2023, it was the period ending June thirtieth, 2023. And then importance of ratio calculation in future years. We've actually included this bullet point because we want to inform the committee. When the committee reviews organizations' financial health, we want you to realize the impact post-pandemic in the second half of 2023 into 2024 and all the way to 2025, just to see how the agencies are doing financially post-pandemic. In summary. The ratio calculations submitted are not an expressed opinion on financial health. They should not be evaluated as a standalone, on a standalone basis. And these ratios really provide an additional tool for evaluation. We do ask that if you do have questions, today's a good day to ask agencies if you notice ratios that are out of range. You may ask the agencies where their funding sources are coming from. And I would say reliance on source of income might be the one that they could probably give you a bit more background and information on. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
Quick question. The trend lines. Is that for a three-year period? Because we have ones where it goes up and down. So is that a three-year period?
Committee member Manukian, yes, that is a three-year period. So the reflected fiscal years are twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. If there is an NA in 2023, which most of the agencies could have an NA because they haven't completed their financial statements and they're on, they're not completed yet and they haven't been submitted to us yet, it would show an NA. Otherwise, the trend line is for three years, yes.
Thank you. Very good. No questions. And we go on then to our next item.
Yes. Under Action Items, five A, Selection of CDBG Advisory Committee Officers. At one is selection of Chair for the term March 2024 through March 2025. And at two, a selection of Vice Chair for the term March 2024 to March 2025.
So, thank you very much. I believe at this time, I hand over to the, to you so that we can start the actual process.
Yes, thank you. The business before the CDBG Advisory Committee is the selection of a new Chair. I will now entertain nominations for that office.
I'd like to nominate Armik.
Second?
We don't need a second, but thank you. Are there any further nominations?
I also nominated Mr. Avadisian.
Any other nominations? For a different committee member? Okay, hearing no further nominations, I'll proceed with the roll call. Committee member Armenian?
Yes.
Avadisian?
Yes.
Garibian?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
And Kenyonis Gabrielian?
Yes.
Okay, now declare Committee Member Avadisian, the duly-elected Chair of the CDBG Advisory Committee. And Mr. Chair, the task before you now is to open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair.
I open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair. Go ahead.
I nominate Committee Member Manukian.
I would also nominate Mr. Manukian, sorry.
Hearing no further nominations, I'll proceed with the roll call.
Please.
Committee Member Armenian?
Yes.
Garibian?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Kenyonis Gabrielian?
Yes.
And Chair Avadisian?
Yes.
Okay, now declare Committee Member Manukian, the duly-elected Vice Chair of the CDBG Advisory Committee.
Thank you.
I can go ahead and switch.
Congratulations unanimously. It was a pleasure. Thank you.
I was just enjoying sitting between two females. Oh, God, I'm gonna sit next to them.
Sorry.
What's next, please?
Certainly. Five B, Funding Recommendations for Fiscal Year 2024 through 2025 Public Social Services. At one is conduct interviews with social services applicants, deliberate and make funding recommendations.
Chair Avadisian, members of the Advisory Committee, we are going to present to you a PowerPoint of today's interview and evaluation process. We are ahead of schedule. So this will give us some time to regroup and, because we are using our laptops this year, to give us a little bit of leeway time to get everything in order before our first agency comes for their interview. So I'll go ahead and get started with our Public Social Services interview schedule and evaluation. We're looking at eleven interviews, which are scheduled today. Eight agencies will be interviewing before lunch and three interviews will be held after lunch. Applicant scoring was completed or can be completed in Zoom Grants. As the committee knows, that scoring was done pre-interview, but scoring is open and can be continued during interviews and even after interviews. Just to let the committee know that. Agency presentation time is five minutes. Questions and answer period is ten minutes. I will say that there will be, I should have flipped those two around. We have a break at ten forty-five AM and then a lunch break at eleven forty-five AM. And then we're going to deliberate and make recommendations around two fifteen PM. We hope to adjourn by three thirty this afternoon. And that should be the end of today's interviews. Just a little background on deliberation and funding recommendations. We are estimating an available funding for Public Social Services. We want to really highlight the fact that this is an estimate, not the final numbers, of two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars in the coming year. We have agency requests at six-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. So that leaves us with a three-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-dollar deficit. We are going to be requesting that a funding contingency plan direction from this committee be presented today because there, we just don't have the numbers. The final numbers will not be released for months. And we will definitely need to know what the contingency plan is for these agencies and the funding. As a reminder, it's a fifteen percent cap on Public Social Services projects. This is HUD guidelines. So only fifteen percent of our total allocation is awarded to Public Social Services. This concludes my presentation. I know, again, we are a little ahead of schedule. So if you would like.
Mrs., Armenian has a comment?
Just since we have a couple of minutes, just to make a, some, a kind of couple of broad comments based on my observations for the committee's consideration. As you mentioned, there's a pretty big deficit. So we're before that challenge again this year. And with the spreadsheet that staff provided, even if you go with the minimum, we're still dramatically over. Even if you gave everyone's minimum, you're still a hundred-and-fifty thousand approximately in deficit. So I think what, one of the things we'll be faced with is whether we try and make, try and make everyone happy with a little bit. We've discussed this in the past, where a little bit is a lot of paperwork. Or do we just say no to one or two in order to more fully fund the others? That's one point I wanted to make. The second point I wanted to make is that we do have two of the three, two agencies within social service applications are also applicants on the capital side with substantial projects. So, you know, something to consider there too is whether, you know, one gets funded more on the capital side in terms of that particular project versus the, the program side on the social services. That's another way to potentially balance out the deficits. I know they're two separate pots of money, but I'm just saying, in terms of the resources that we attempt to provide, the agencies that all do important work. We, we know all these agencies. I don't think there's any new ones this year. So I would also propose that we factor that into our deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
I would like to join the commission member, Commissioner Member Armenian's comments. My concern was exactly that. Do we try to fund everybody a little bit or not fund some? And I think that I would entertain some thoughts about that before we head into hearing the agencies and making our own decisions. So if anybody has strong feelings about it, I would like to hear it.
Expand upon my thoughts, you know, more specific, using more specifics. I mean, we do have Catholic charities that we've funded every year that I've been on CDBG. They do great work. But they also, this year, have a pretty substantial project in terms of capital. So one way I'm thinking about it is I'd rather fund them on the, because we have more money to work with and less applicants, ironically speaking, on the capital side of things, even though we know the price tag on these capital projects are bigger than the, even bigger than any of the social service programs. I don't want to shortchange social service programs because they are important. But again, you know, putting in a lot of labor and paperwork for a minimal amount of money doesn't seem to me an efficient way for us or the organization. So in this particular case, you have Catholic Charities and Door of Hope who have both applied for capital program. So that's potentially, in my mind at least, one place to say, let's, let's focus Catholic Charities on their capital project this year. Unless, and this is something I'll be asking them, unless, for example, not getting social service dollars is going to jeopardize their program because I don't want to do that either. Like, do they have enough on their own to keep their social service program going without social service CDBG funds? That's kind of one of the things I'm going to be asking them when they come in. I know Door of Hope probably can, just based on my knowledge of Door of Hope, but I don't know about Catholic Charities.
Chair Avadisian, yes.
I have a concern about that. And, and I would love to dig in a little bit more and maybe have staff help us. I noticed that that was one of the pro, applications that was not previously scored by staff. And I wondered, you know, why that was. I, I didn't see any scoring by staff when I was working through the review tools. So, are they missing substantial information? And also, how do you feel about their? And maybe that's a question we should ask them if, if we do skip that. My other question is, we serve two very different community profiles, you know, profile of, of residents here in the city of Glendale. Will we be really taking away some valuable funding for, for, for that versus what the other organizations serve, like the Armenian Relief Society or Door of Hope or, you know, whatever the program? Because I think they're focusing in on homelessness this year, correct? Their, their focus is on homelessness. And I'd like to make sure that I understand the communities served by other organizations as well.
Chair Avadisian, members of the Advisory Committee, Committee Member Kenyonis Gabrielian. To give you a background, Catholic Charities Loaves and Fishes Program is a homeless prevention program. These are folks who are on the brink of homelessness. They receive rental assistance, utility assistance, and food pantry assistance. As long, and, and a array of other services. With Door of Hope, that is a transitional housing program where women and children who are fleeing domestic violence situations are placed in a, in an undisclosed location and are receiving counseling services through the, their program. So those are the two populations that are being served. Brink of homelessness versus actual homelessness in a specific population. It might be, as Committee Member Armenian had mentioned, you, you can ask these agencies what they, you know, what they're able to provide, what services, if it's dire, if they can figure out other funding. I mean, these are questions that would be asked of them. But I can tell you that for Catholic Charities, they've been doing this program for, my goodness, fifty years plus. And I know for a fact that I personally refer to them in the senior services section. And we work with their agency to provide additional services to our clientele as well. So I, I would hate to see that go away.
So, one is preventative. The other one is if that goes away, the other Essentia and the other homelessness programs will have more on their hands to deal with because we didn't prevent the homelessness. So I, I do, I would have a big issue then, yes.
I, I, I can see the logical reasoning for if they're asking for capital improvements and social services. We try to pick one. But I don't think that one can replace the other. I, I don't think that with the Catholic Charities in particular, you know, the, the request that they're making to get zero, I think that would really jeopardize their programs. But, I mean, we can, we can discuss this later. My, my question- My, my question to the staff is, there are certain agencies that have low reasonable requests? And would it even be reasonable to talk about the area, around the amount of 5,000? Because if they're asking for 10, or is that just a waste of everybody's time to even consider that?
That's an excellent question to ask Vice Chair Manukian. I would, and this would be my recommendation, and Ms. Alexonyan, if you would like to also comment, we feel that, in my opinion, $10,000 would be the minimum because there are quarterly reports that have to be turned in, invoicing that has to be done by their bookkeeper or their accounting firm. There's a lot of work that goes into it by administrative work that goes into having a $10,000 grant fund. So that being said, I would, at least I feel that $10,000 would be a good minimum. $5,000 just wouldn't be worth it.
Good to know.
For all of that paperwork that's involved. It's heavy on the paperwork.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question? Go ahead.
In my opinion, the way I see it, I think before we even start interviewing the agencies, come to some conclusions who we should fund or not fund because they have it in different categories. Additionally, almost all of them, as you mentioned earlier, these are agencies we've been working with, at least in my case, last six years or seven years. And we're familiar with each one in detail, exactly what they do and what they have done. So I think I think it's very premature to discuss that until we actually interview. Plus, some of them that they have their minimums, yes, it's obvious. For example, the Catholic Charities that we're discussing, the minimum they requested is pretty high. I, I think we can give them the opportunity to reconsider their minimum during the interview. Maybe they'll change their mind. Maybe they'll say, you know what, I'll take 10,000. If he, she's gonna, he's gonna drop 60,000 or 55,000 from his minimum requirement, that, that will change our approach. So even though, yes, granted, we can probably keep everyone happy or, but I don't want to think about it that if I'm giving you for a different project, which is a construction of a building versus another project that is social, I don't know if I want to balance that now at the get-go without even talking to them. That's where I stand.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Not, what's next, please?
Next would be the interviews. We're still running ahead of schedule. We could take a short recess and, and come back. The, the first interview is scheduled for 9:30 a.m.
9:30. So 30 minutes? 20 minutes? Let's, let's have 20 minutes.
About as soon as the first one shows up.
Yeah.
Chair of Avedisian, members of the advisory committee, all the agencies were notified that they should be here 20 minutes ahead of their schedule. So we will be ahead of schedule because the first one should be arriving sooner than expected.
We should come back from break as soon as the first one's here.
Absolutely.
Okay. Let's, let's plan on 15 minutes, I guess. If they're sooner than we're, we're, we'll come back. Thank you.
Okay, and we're back from our recess. The first agency up for an interview is Essentia for the emergency housing program. And as a reminder, please state your name for the record.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Marcel Mitchell. I'm Director of Programs at Essentia. Oh, laughing by myself. How about Laura Duncan here, who's the executive director, Mary Fleischer, who's our Director of Grants and Finance.
Good morning, you're welcome.
All right. So today, we're requesting, well, just a little bit, a little history. We operate a 45-bed shelter here in Glendale, with only shelter that's currently operating in the, the city of Glendale. Today, we're requesting $25,000, which would be 37% of a full-time position for a daytime RA. This position was created right at the beginning of COVID to cover our shelter. So our shelter operates before COVID, our, our clients had to be out the shelter between hours of 7:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. When shelter hit, I mean, when COVID hit, of course, we wanted everybody to be safe. There were mandates across the county, et cetera. So we had to expand our shelter operations to include the clients to stay in 24 hours a day, which included the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. So we had to create a position of the daytime RA to kind of manage the clients being in the shelter during that time because we had no previous coverage. Because once again, everyone had to leave at 7:00 a.m., was not allowed to return to 4:00 p.m. So that position was created to assist with, you know, daytime operations for the clients, serving meals, lunches. We had to go to three meals a day. We had to add an additional meal period, which was a lunch period, which we did not previously offer before COVID, because once again, the clients had to be out of the shelter before then. So that, this position covers that, manages clients, light maintenance, facilities, and just any issues that comes up with the clients during that, you know, that time. This position has been unfunded since the beginning of COVID, and this is the first year that we're asking for funding to partially fund this position.
Thank you. Anybody has a question?
I just have a broad question, since you're more of the subject matter expert in this. Kind of what's your observations, generally speaking, of the homelessness situation in the city of Glendale? And specifically, both in terms of the population here, the homeless population in Glendale, as well as what you're seeing in terms of, since there's no board, real borders, right? Homeless populations coming and going within the city of Glendale and other neighboring jurisdictions? Because we all know that the city of Los Angeles has a very severe homelessness problem. Mayor Bass has been trying to address that since she got elected. And so I'm just curious to see if you're noticing any differences recently.
Yeah, so I mean, we, we want to know officially until the homeless count numbers come out. The homeless count was conducted here in Glendale at the end of January. So I mean, once those numbers come out, we'll have a more bigger picture. But far as our day-to-day operations, I mean, our street outreach team is out in the streets here in Glendale, Monday through Friday. I mean, they've seen, you know, a slight uptake of homeless individuals in the city of Glendale. I mean, we receive more service calls from Glendale PD, service providers, community members. So we're seeing a slight uptake in the number of homeless individuals here in the city of Glendale.
Thank you.
Another question?
Hi, thanks for coming. I know we always ask for the minimum that you'll take, and we see it here that you have it at 20,000. Just last chance, is that your final minimum?
That, that is our final minimum. Our total, our total operating cost for the shelter is 826,000 annually. We only receive, currently receive from the city of Glendale 52,000 a year from ESG and HAP. So, I mean, that is, you know, kind of the bare minimum that we, you know, could accept to, you know, keep our shelter fully operating.
Thank you.
Mr. Armenian?
You said that this is the first year that you're asking for funding for the RA. I know previously CDBG has funded. Was that for, was it for an outreach?
Street outreach, yes, for our street outreach.
And so now the street outreach is still continuing but being funded by other sources?
Yeah, so we have, we have enough funding for the next fiscal year for our street outreach team. So we decided to take the chance and see if we could get some additional support from our shelter, which is, you know, one of our, you know, main projects here in Glendale and that, you know, we constantly struggle with funding for.
And so the RA position, did it exist in prior years? Or is this the first year that you're creating that position?
So it existed, like, right when COVID started, but it was not funded. So we, we've been operating this position unfunded for the past couple of years. So we said, let's try to, you know, get some funding for this position and, you know, see what happens.
Thank you.
Thank you. Question?
Just a comment. I, I, I see the work that you've done. I mean, I, I've seen it firsthand. I've been a Glendale, what do you call it, guest chef there.
Thank you for that.
And the folks that you served and looked at the entire place, even, I, I think a privilege of seeing the back room and, and the residences. But I want to make sure that you understood the question that Committee Member Manukian asked. Is it, was it him or, or was it?
Garibian.
Okay, Garibian. Committee Member Garibian. And that is, if we don't have $20,000 to give, because I don't know if you understand that we are, we are short of $367,000 from the requests that have been applied for and the funding that we have. HUD only allows us to provide 15% of our total budget to social services. Would you, would it be too much to take less, you know, because of the required quarterly reports, et cetera? Or is it $20,000 or nothing? And I'm.
I say I would speak for us to say we'll accept whatever you're willing to give, you know, but this is a, we, we requested 25,000. That's our actual goal, you know? But obviously, you know, if you're, you're under a funding constraint and that's not something that you're able to do this year, which you have done previously for us for the outreach position. So we've been really fortunate. But I do understand you're under a budget constraint, so we could probably reduce that, you know, given that we have been using general operating funds to fund this position.
Thank you.
Yes. Chair of Avedisian, thank you. I think she may have answered it. My question was going to be, you would have had to have paid the resident associate. So when you say unfunded, I'm assuming it was coming from a different funding source. So it's not that it's unfunded, it's just funded through a different funding source. And I was going to ask what funding source that was. But it seems like it's general operating from some of the other grants and donations you're getting. Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
One, thank you. No other questions? One comment question. I just want to understand and see how this works. If your clients that they come in and you service them, you put them in their transition process, and you move them forward to better life, better, better housing and whatnot, and get them out of the street. How often, or if any, do you have clients that six months, one year down the road, after graduating or moving on, they, they come back again? They're repeat clients, so called? And do you have that? And if you do, what do you do with them? What happens at that point?
Yeah, so I mean, we have a, currently, we have a 98% housing retention rate. That's once somebody is placed into permanent housing, like you said. But, no, our shelter program is only from 60 to 90 days, 90-day stay. So there's a lot of people that come to our shelter, they do not exit to permanent housing, they exit back to the streets. But for those that do exit into permanent housing, where they're able to, you know, live permanently, that success rate is, like I said, 98%. They usually barely fall out of housing unless it's for some extraneous reason where they lose their source of income, et cetera. And in that case, if that does happen, if they come back to us, we'll help them again and try to get them housed again throughout the process again.
Okay, so percentage of the repeat clients are very low?
Yes.
Basically.
That going to permanent housing.
Right.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Armenian?
I forgot to ask this question earlier. I know there's the continuum of care in the city of Glendale. Can you describe how that collaboration is working or if there's any opportunities for improvement?
Yeah, so as Essentia, we're Essentia, we're the lead agency for the Glendale Continuum of Care for the individual side. So, I mean, we've been, we have our access center, we have our street outreach team, we have our emergency shelter. We also collaborate with the other agencies within the continuum. We all work together, Catholic Charities, et cetera. So I mean, we're pretty much partnered together. I think we have a good continuum of care, we have a good core, and we have good agencies that provide services to, all-around, wraparound services, whether employment, DUGO Job Center, you know, LAU, I mean, GUSD, the school system. Anywhere we need to get people connected to, we have those resources here in our continuum to get those clients connected.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your time and everything you do. Our next agency per our schedule is Pro-Burner Clinic, Armenian Bar Association. They're not here. I see the Armenian Engineers and Scientists of America is here. You guys want to move forward and jump to schedule? Go back and forth?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yes.
Chair of Avedisian, members of the advisory committee, before we move forward with the Armenian Engineers and Scientists of America, I did want to address the question that Committee Member Kenyonis Gabriyan had regarding Catholic Charities. We did input the administrative scores for that, public social services, Catholic Charities' public social services program, so they are now part of Zoom Grants and ready for your review. So thank you for addressing that and finding that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
One more question, staff and Ms. Kavarian. So is your recommendation, given we're working with a new system here online, that we be filling out, there's pretty extensive scoring in the Zoom Grants? Or is that something that can be done later? Or do you want us to be doing that in real time?
That's a really good question, Committee Member Armenian. Before we transition, transition to Zoom Grants, we had given you hard copies of the scoring system. And with that, we've always left it open until the end of interviews for you to make your final decisions based on either the individual agency or, you know, weighing the options of two agencies that have very similar programs. So to answer your question, you can wait until the very end of deliberations and input your scoring numbers. But the administrative scoring has been now completed, and you can use that as a guide if you need additional, a tool of evaluation to see how the staff scored each agency based on their proposals, not the interviews.
And, and in terms of, because the system saves it as you do it, this is a kind of more of a guide for us?
Correct.
Right? So that it informs our decisions at the end?
Correct, and it is open for editing, so you can always change your scores.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Armenian Engineers and Scientists of America, if you're ready, please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Start?
Sure, go ahead.
Good morning, CDBG Advisory Committee. My name is Aroxyana Jarian. I'm the AESA STEM Academy Director. I have with me Aram Taramartarosian, past president of the AESA. The AESA is the Armenian Engineers and Scientists Association. We're a 40-year-old nonprofit founded in 1983 headquartered in Glendale. We have various programs under the STEM Academy, but I'd like to focus on our STEM classes today for which we are requesting funds. We teach children ages eight to 18 coding, robotics, and 3D modeling. The curriculum supports children with various knowledge and experience levels. There are 12 to 16 There are 12 to 16 students per cohort. As we all know, learning to code and robotics are not only for children who want to be engineers or scientists. This rigorous program teaches kids to think outside of the box, to think critically, and to solve problems. This will help in all industries, no matter which career path they choose. As per the Bureau of Labor Statistics Employment Projections, in 2021, there were nearly 10 million workers in STEM occupations, and this is projected to grow by almost 11% by 2031, two times faster than the total for all occupations. The median annual wages as of May 2021 were $95,420 for STEM occupations compared to only $40,000 for non-STEM occupations. For instance, healthcare occupations, which generally require a strong STEM background, are projected to grow even more. Non-STEM occupations will grow at a rate of 5%. This comprehensive curriculum has a proven track record with more than 17,000 students who have participated in the past 10 years in this program and nearly 700 laboratories worldwide. The following are some results from the Grant Thornton Assessment. 84% of these 17,000 students have been admitted to universities. 45% have been employed involving software. 29% have been employed in the IT sector. And an astonishing 12% have founded startups. It's an extremely successful and ongoing program, and they can start from basic and excel to competition level. The pricing for these STEM classes are $250 monthly for 16 hours of participation, which is very affordable compared to other STEM programs. And it's enough, and it's enough to cover our costs since we're a nonprofit organization. We anticipate serving at least 48 students, 29 of which will be residents of the city of Glendale from low to moderate income households, and 19 from low to moderate income households for our STEM program during the entire 2024, 2025 fiscal year. Some plans for outreach and marketing include advertising in Peachjar, where we submit to every GUSD school, to school clubs such as Mesa. And we will also be advertising in various newsletters and also advertising in social media such as Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, TV advertising, and the best form of advertising is word of mouth and referrals. And we're also planning on distributing flyers at community centers. Our goal is to provide these low to moderate income household students who do not have access to the course materials, equipment, and hardware available within their educational community nor in their households compared with other children who go to private schools, for instance. ASA has requested a total of $16,620, which is only 16.9% of the total program cost. This program will fill in the educational gap and partially unburden their local schools to invest in such programs. Our facility is located in southern Glendale, ZIP Code 91204, and is easily accessible facility within the low to moderate income census tract. It's a convenient location with plenty of parking. All of you are more than welcome to visit and see our bright kids. I'm sure there will be an overwhelming interest in this program. A child's ZIP Code should not determine their STEM literacy and educational options. Thank you for your time and consideration. And with your help, we will achieve our goal in STEM education regardless of socioeconomic status.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Armenian.
I have a question of you, but I first have a question of staff. I'm wondering if you could explain a little bit more in your strengths and weaknesses assessment. You said program outcomes are not reasonable and measurable in the submitted application. I know ASA provided an answer, but I don't know that that actually answered what your statement was of staff. So wondering if you could explain your perspective first, and then I have a question directly.
Absolutely. Committee member Armenian, Chair Vedesian, to answer the question, committee members. As you recall, we had done the mid-year report and you saw program outcomes that are presented in that mid-year report for each agency. Program outcomes should reflect, well, there should be two program outcomes. How will they be successful in a measurement, a reasonable measurement and a realistic measurement of success? So we look for percentages, we look for numbers served. And it really doesn't have to be too long. It should be something to the effects of 10 out of 15 will complete robotics. I, apologies, I, you know, whatever your program is. Something where there's an achievement at the end of the program year. So that's what we were looking at as a program outcome, if that makes sense.
And so in their response to that weakness statement, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but the first thing said, we expect 50% of the students to be able to complete at least the first level of coding and robotics by spring term. Is that the type of metrics you're looking for? Or are you looking for a number of participants? I'm just trying to understand the nature of the weakness that you're putting your finger.
What we do is, we, we're looking at this point in time because we don't know what the numbers will be. We don't know how much they will, how much money they will be funded. During contract season is really when we work with the agency to figure out what their accomplishments will be. But again, we want to measure numbers served. We want to see what they will accomplish. And we want some percentages, of course, and some numbers. And then ways for them to also submit that information to us because it's not just, you know, submitting a quarterly report. We actually do the legwork of seeing, you know, rosters and things that are, documents that are submitted to us for review. So there's a lot of supporting documentation that comes with that. So at this point in time, we could always rework a program outcome. It's not a huge concern at this point. But we, once we do get to the point of contract terms, yes, we will be working with you extensively. As a matter of fact, Ms. Alexonyan and I really work on this more so than anything during contract season.
And in fairness, I mean, in the responses, like I said, they do say 48 students are the minimum number of students that will participate in the program. And then if I do the math and look at the next answer, which says we expect 50% of the students, I guess it's 50% of the 48. Is that the metric you're looking at?
Yes, yes, I should have clarified that.
And then please don't take these questions as, I'm a big fan of ASA and the programs you do. So, and the importance of this program. So please don't take my questions in a negative manner. I just want to make sure we get to the bottom of it. My second question is to you. I did see in the application something that worried me a little bit and one of the things that you said, which said basically that if you were not to get the funding that you're requesting, you won't be able to advertise to low income. And you say, we will, to low income, potential low income participants and that those that come to us will find their way to our program. That worries me because the whole intent of the program and the funding is to support such a program targeted at the low income disadvantaged population. So if you're saying, if we don't get our funding, we can't do the advertising to the low income and kind of leaving it to them just finding their way, that to me is undermining the whole purpose of the program. If, for example, as we stated at the beginning of this meeting, we probably can't fund every, not probably, we won't be able to fund everyone 100% certainly. We might not even be able to fund everyone a minimum. And there may be some programs that we don't fund. We'll see where we get by the end of the day. But that statement worried me. I wonder if you could comment on that.
We don't want to say like completely, well, not, but our, basically our effort, our efforts are towards getting the low income families. So we use whatever we have advertising tools, some TV programs out, like Facebook and things like that to track those. But what we're trying to say that, that funding will help us tremendously to focus more on a low income families and try to get more of them to our program. It's probably, it's not like we're not going to advertise. From the first day we opened the doors, the main focus was to try to help to disadvantaged families that they would not have access to this kind of equipment and training and things like that. So probably we didn't want it to specifically say we will not advertise, but. Do you want to continue?
Yeah, also just add one word. We had reduced, by the minimum, we reduced it by 4,500. And with the remaining 4,500 that we do have in budget, we will focus only on low to moderate income, not to the rest of the students. We'll focus on the low to moderate income, the schools located in those ZIP Codes. And as per the census tract, more southern Glendale, we'll use the funds differently if we get less funding. But we will definitely, that is our main priority, to focus our target.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification because that's not the way it read.
Oh, sorry.
It read like you're not going to. And then I'm like, well, if they're not going to, how's the program going to work? So I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Now the questions? Go ahead, Ms. Manukyan, ladies first.
Thank you. Continuing on that train of thought, I noticed that approximately 30% of the funds that you're seeking from CDBG is for advertising purposes. And then I looked at what you wrote under the collaboration with other organizations tab. And I see that a lot of the collaboration is with who's going to be teaching or where you're going to be teaching, but not necessarily collaboration for the purpose of advertising your services. That doesn't cost money to go on TV because nowadays with, or I'm seeing the advertising costs include printing and mailing flyers. But now everybody is, you know, online and it's very inexpensive to use a social campaign.
Right, of course.
Social network campaign. So I'm wondering whether that 30% of the CDBG requested budget is well-used for advertising instead of applying it somewhere else or coming up with a better way to advertise your services?
Yes, yes, it will be very well advertised as we have done in the past. We have a social media marketing team who focuses on online advertising. And those few organizations, most of them are nonprofit, I believe, that I mentioned, they have large networks too. We collaborate with them, not for instructors. Instructors are more from our member base, professionals from the ASA. For those organizations, they've been advertising for us. They've included even advertising on their social media and in their facilities. They have, they have our flyers there and they're advertising even on their TVs there that I've seen. So we work extensively, that, which doesn't cost anything, by the way, that portion of it collaborating. It doesn't come out of any of this budget. That's just exchange of services, bartering, or just collaboration. So those we're all doing and we're going to continue to do with Hero House, with Academy USA and those organizations. We're already doing that and that doesn't cost us anything.
I think I had one more question, yes, sorry. In terms of your ability to leverage funding, you stated operating income of $73,500 and the organization's budget of $82,600 to cover the rest. Where does the budget from the organization come from if it's not from operating income?
You're referring to the $73,000?
Well, no, I'm assuming operating income of $73,000 is from paid classes. But then there's about $8,260, is that from donations?
That's from the ASA budget, yes.
Which is?
Yes, donations, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Gharibian, Ms. Alexonyan.
Hi. So I have a question. Why aren't you guys even going out and apply for more grants or fundraising? So why are you limited to only the operating income that you collect from the students and the CDBG? Have you tried or you guys?
We tried last year. We got a small grant from AYF, of their foundation. And this year, one of our tasks is to be more active and search for grants out there. I know there's a lot of grants for STEM particularly. So that's going to be one of the things we're focusing on this year.
And then I noticed you guys say Peachjar, I'm not familiar with that.
Peachjar is the newsletter that goes out to all the parents of GUSD students.
Relevant of their income level, just everybody gets.
Yes, yes. You just, it's per school, you pay per school basis.
Okay. Then I noticed on your flyers, you have new flyers here as a sample flyers. All of them has how much it costs, for how many hours. Then a couple of them, you just have discounts available. How do you advertise to really low incomes? Discounts available so somebody can read it and say, oh, 250, so they're going to give me $20 off. Still going to cost me 220.
Yeah, we're going to have new flyers depending on the success of this application, hopefully. The discounts available that it's referring to now, we offer a $50 discount to ASA families if they bring their children. And also another $50 if families bring siblings. So they can save $100 per child per month if they're. Yes.
$50 per child?
$50 per child per month if they're an ASA member. And another 50 though for if they bring siblings to children.
Do you have any samples of how do you market to really low income? And what is the max? Is it zero money from them, you fund them 100%? If there are families who have limited resources for funding, do you fund them 100%?
Depending on whatever we can raise ASA as donations and what we can get from all different programs like this, we're thinking the whole discount will go to the low income families. So we're thinking at least $100 discounts for low income families. So it will be 100, become 150. And then if they bring siblings, another $50 discount. So that will make it very affordable.
So they still have to pay something? You don't have 100%?
Hopefully, we can raise so much money from this.
Right, because we're limited on budget on the fundraising, that's what I'm saying. So even if.
I'm sorry, but we do want them to pay a little bit, even $20, $30. So the parents pay something, they bring their kids and things like that. If it's free, they think it's free program.
Oh, should there be a qualification process?
Yes.
A little to pay to make sure that they're committed.
They're committed and bring their children, so.
Do you have any, I mean, is it a monthly program? Because it's a 16 weeks program, what was it?
It's 16 hours per month. Yeah, it's four hours, four hour classes.
Changes the programs, like they can do one month, not necessarily, they don't have to do the following month, it just drops there?
It's, the program is scheduled very nicely. So kids can join at any time and they can continue as much as they want. So they build on it. So same kids starting at the same time, they don't necessarily go the same way. I mean, the brighter kids go faster. And then they get up to the age of 18 and they still have things to do because the final, at about 18 years old and stuff, they have competition level. It's very, so it's an ongoing program. So they can start whenever they want and finish whenever they want.
But it could also limit them financially. If somebody can't afford to go all the way up, they'll just do 16 hours.
No, they don't need to come for several years. The average number of children who, as per their studies for this curriculum, if the children come for one and a half to two years, they're able to find a beginner level job. So, and with kids who are very busy, they don't, they don't need to come for five years. Yeah.
But yes, it will limit if they financially cannot afford. We, I mean, we're trying to, the program is one year old right now. So we're trying to get as much funding as possible to make it as affordable as possible. We are nonprofit, it's not that we want to make any profit. We, the ASA itself donates a lot of money, but we need to work with a lot of programs and get donations. So we bring it to bare minimum so that every family in Glendale can afford it. And the money will not be issued to have kids at the school.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Chair Vedesian, members of the committee. I don't necessarily have a question, but it might lead to a question. But just to clarify the question that committee member Armenian had asked about the outcomes. I know Ms. Kavarian mentioned that we normally determine the outcomes at the end. If they are funded, we do clarify and revise the outcomes. But just wanted to clarify that we do expect the agencies to provide what they consider to be measurement of success for their program. So the outcomes are supposed to be, if you were to get this funding, what do you consider to be success in measuring the success of your program? You know, normally. You know, normally, we would expect for them to say, you know, success is measured by X, Y, or Z, depending on what type of service or program they're providing. I would like to maybe ask for clarification because in looking at, you know, our indication of the weakness and asking for clarification, if I'm understanding this correctly, is that they're stating that what their measurement of success would be, would be 50% of the students, that would be 50% of the 48 that they're stating they would serve, would be able to complete at least the first level of coding and robotics by the spring term, correct?
Yes, yes.
That would be, what would be your second measurement? Is it the same goes to the second-level students? So your second outcome would be 50%, where minimum 50% will advance to Level 3 coding robotics? Could you just clarify, what is the second outcome that you are stating?
Well, we have basically three levels, and the second one I'm mentioning is that 50% of those children will go to the third level, and they will go to more advanced projects and more advanced programming languages such as C++. And at that point, we have competitions that we can participate in, online, in-person, local competitions, there are many. That's how we measure, you know, the kid's success. Every child is different, some children really love it, they do, they do extra homework, they buy an extra kit, they work on it at home, all their progress is different.
Absolutely, I...
Just, it's, so this is education, so we, there's no straight-cut way of saying what the success is. It's a long-term process. So at the first time, we thought, what would we expect? And we looked at a similar program that, I mean, the program, this Armad program that we were handling was going on for how many years?
Ten years.
Ten years, and there's statistics with it. So we used that statistic, we said, this program is successful because it had this kind of a success level in general. Our program is one-year-old, so if you want specific, we kind of hoping that, and we think we will, that in every level, we will at least get 50% of the students to advance to the next levels.
Based on our current one-year history of having this program?
Right, and I appreciate that clarification, and that would necessarily be like your first outcome, right? Because you don't know how many students you're gonna get that might be in Level 1 versus Level 2 versus Level 3. So it's hard to say that 50% of your students would go to Level 2 because you might get, you know, the 48 that come to you might be already at Level 2, right? So they would go to Level 3. So the other thing to keep in mind is that they are supposed to be measurable. So because the CDBG funding is one-year funding, you wouldn't necessarily be following these students, right, for the next three, four, five years to see where they would end up. So it's gotta be something that's measurable in that year that you're funded, so that we could say, you know, with the, and I apologize, how much are you asking for? So, you know, with these, let's assume fully funded, the $16,000, you were able to progress a student from whatever level they started to the next one. So that would be one outcome. So the second outcome, we would need a, another measurable outcome that would state, you know, how do we measure success? Like, was that $16,000 that had provided in advancing your program? The other thing to keep in mind is that overall with CDBG, you do have to serve 60% of the population that you're serving, which you're saying at least 48, have to be low-income. So just wanted to clarify and ask that, would you, do you comfortably feel that 60% of the population, of the students served, would be low-income? Because they would have to be. It wouldn't be, you know, if you have 200 students, it's not 60% of the 200, but at least of the 48 that you would be serving, you would have to show that 60% are gonna be from the low-income. So whether we, you know, whether the committee gives $10,000 or the $16,000, you still would need to meet that outcome. So we wouldn't be able to reduce that per se. And the measurement of, the outcome would be based on what you say, you know, your program outcome would be, but the percentage of the population served, that can't be one of the outcomes, if that makes sense.
I understand, I understand.
Just wanted to clarify that for the committee and also...
Yeah, we definitely hope it's gonna be way more than 60%. So, I mean, that's minimum that we think. So with this program, more focusing on the low-income families, we think it's, will be 80, 90% of that 48 will be in the low-income.
Thank you. Go ahead, have a question?
Sorry.
Ms. Arminian?
Oh, yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, just, I, first of all, I'm a big fan of STEM programs, and I think that, I just want to clarify, because you're a one-year-old program, it's hard to provide a program such as this with, you know, a curriculum that's already built because you've got standards to maintain. This is an international, right?
Right.
Curriculum that you're following, and it's a successful one. And so for, do you have any low-income students at the moment? And what percentage of the students that you were able to successfully go, graduate this program in the first year were low-income?
We, as of now, we don't ask for any income verification.
So you don't, no.
We were not funded last year.
You don't, okay.
But we know which zip codes they're from, which schools they're from, and a good portion of them are already low-income areas, so I would believe so. I'm pretty confident that we'll be able to have minimum 60% without any problem.
Previously, how much?
Oh, previously, as of now, we have not taken any of their financial information. We just have, as I said, the schools they're from, based on...
Oh, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Arminian?
I appreciate all the discussion on measurement, I have a different quick question. I think you said you hold the program at Academy USA, Hero House is another location?
Hero House is where our offices are headquartered.
Oh, okay, but the actual program is at Academy USA?
Yes, yes, the first floor.
So, yeah, it's a great facility from a sports perspective, and I know the owners are big believers in youth and giving a place for youth to gather and do a variety of activities, including your activity. Are they charging you for that space? Or is that part of their donation? Or are they charging you at a discounted rate? I mean, how does that arrangement work?
No, they don't charge, it's, they just, it's their donation, as part of the donation. Just last time, just to make sure, last time, there was a confusion, somebody said that how you teach classes in the basketball court, this is, that one-third of that is a high-class school, basically. We use it only first floor. The owners are pushing us to expand our program, go to the same, because we have a lot of space there. It's a very beautiful facility, we welcome to check anytime. So, yeah, they donating it for now, and not only donating the space, they donating the advertising with their...
Their co-branding.
Yeah, and co-branding, and it's just...
That's great. No, I'm very familiar with the facility and the two parts to it. One is the sports complex, one is this facility. I just wanted to also show appreciation to the owners of Academy USA for being a contributor in this manner. That's why I wanted to point that out, whether or not they're charging. So that's a great location, by the way, for such a program.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's not, I mean, to be fair to them, they're not just, they were the reason this program started. They just came up with the idea, they approached us, they said, we are at sports, we have this, would you be able to start this program? And that's how this program started.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments? If not, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
All right. We are back to our schedule, Probono Legal Clinic.
Yes, that would be the Armenian Bar Association.
Please come forward.
Is it?
You can all hear that, right? The buzzing?
All this buzzing. Not easy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi. I'm Steve Dedan, I'm currently the Bar Association's chairman. Unfortunately, our coordinators are not able to make it today because, who handled the legal aid clinic? Because they're actually working attorneys, so they had to go to court. Armin and I are here subbing in. Armin's actually the chair of the committee that oversees the...
My name is Armin Toschan, I'm a co-chairperson of the Probono Committee. I handle basically day-to-day, actual legal matters for the pro bono clients, and I'm happy to answer any question about individuals that we're assisting. Budgetary issues, I'm not familiar with, so I'll stay out of that.
I might know a little more about the budget. So you've seen the packet, you have any questions?
Sorry to interrupt you. If you could please speak directly into the mic, so we could...
Come closer. Come closer and speak.
You've received the packet, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them to the extent that we can.
Okay. Anybody has any questions? Mr. Arminian, Mr. Arminian next.
First quick question. You weren't here when we had this discussion, but we have a pretty big gap between the available funding and the amount of requests for organizations. That's why staff always ask, what's the minimum? In your case, your request is almost $49,000, your minimum is $35,000. That's even high, the minimum, compared to the amount we have to work with today. So what is your bare minimum to make this worthwhile for your program?
I mean, the program will be scaled back based on, the $48,000 is based on providing three days a week of legal services. It's done here at the adult center, and obviously, if we don't have the money, we're gonna scale it back. So last year, I think we only got $20,000, I think we only were able to provide Saturday sessions, like from 1:00 to 5:00. And, you know, frankly speaking, I think that the community need is greater this year than in the past years. I think there's gonna be, and we're seeing greater stresses on housing, and also greater stresses on legal services from other nonprofits, you know, their ability to deal with the need in the community. Probably landlord tenant is gonna be the big issue continuing in this year, and, I mean, frankly speaking, one day a week probably isn't gonna be able to satisfy the community need.
And I noted, which comports with what you just said, that staff has one of their weaknesses in the application, said that there was no leveraging other funding, it was 100% dependent on the amount we got. So is that still the case?
Yes.
You have no other sources?
Yeah, not for this program, no.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Arminian?
Hello, thanks for coming. Just follow-up on my colleague on the funding, I know CDBG says 100%. Why not go out for more fundings or grants? There's so many of them out there, or even fundraising?
Yeah, we are seeking additional funding, but as far as fundraising, we do fundraising, and the fundraising are for specific projects. We will augment this with our own funding to the extent that we can, but, I mean, it's a volunteer organization, so we're limited on how much we can get. The other legal aid services that are provided in the community are Neighborhood Legal Services, Legal Aid Society, and all of them are also feeling the stresses because of the need, more than even the funding.
So we have agencies like Housing Rights and all that, they do some of those things.
Right, there's, I, yeah.
How about your collaboration with other agencies or any other programs?
Well, we work with the Adult Recreation Center, so a lot of times, they're able to, because of the people that come there, they're able to find, identify folks who need assistance, and they refer them to us. We also work with Glendale Police Department and take referrals from them. A lot of times, they'll find people who are in need, they don't have services, legal services, and they'll contact us in our office, so.
Catholic Immigration Services.
Catholic Immigration Services, apparently.
So these are great, but as far as budgets and fundings?
We're not getting funding from any of them.
You're not getting anything from any of them?
No, no. Maybe the police department can kick in some money for us.
The police department foundation is already short, I'm a member and the board of the police foundation. Well, thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, any other questions, Ms. Manukyan?
Well, maybe more comment. You talked about housing rights, but the Probono Clinic also helps with family law cases.
Family law, domestic violence.
Domestic violence, family law, which is also rising in need.
And we get, a lot of times, we get those referrals from our colleagues at the police department as well, so...
And I noticed that in terms of the expected number to be served and the actual number to be served, our numbers indicate that you exceeded by 267%. You had wanted to serve 12, you've already served 32. So if there's a budget cut and you have less days where the clinic is open, I'm assuming that number would decrease.
That number would substantially decrease. And by the way, when you talk about the folks that we've assisted, those are the actual folks that we've actually provided legal services for. Besides that, there are dozens and dozens who come through the door.
Excuse me, Steve, if you would, please come a little bit forward more to the mic, so the public can hear it also. Thank you.
Besides those are the folks that we actually provided legal services to, besides them, there are probably three or fourfold of folks that come through our door, consult with us, we consult with our partners and other legal providers for assistance, that we're not able to provide assistance for them for a number of reasons. Either there's a conflict, or it's not something that legal services are necessary at this juncture.
Just to add, domestic violence, family law, bankruptcy, immigration, personal injury, the wide spectrum. Last year, we did clinics on assisting first-time DUI offenders to go through the judicial system so that they can rehab themselves. We also assisted at clinics where people show up and we provide assistance with getting expungements off of their records, prior criminal misdemeanor crimes off their records so they can be more easily employable, things like that. So wide range of assistance, and we got about 20 volunteer attorneys, including myself, that we assist them and field questions almost on a daily basis. But the actual number of people that we assign time and provide service is what's at stake here.
Follow-up question to that. If the public wants to seek services, they can also email rather than just show up on the days that the clinic is open, right?
We have a liaison person who meets with public on scheduled dates as well as communicates with them, both via text and email if necessary, yes. We also collaborate with other agencies like Catholic Charities, Immigration Services, Bedsetec, Neighborhood Legal Services, et cetera, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No. One question, I think we're done. As of now, you're still doing one day a week, right, on a Saturday? So with this program, you might be able to expand, if you get the funding, expand to two to three days a week?
Yes, we used to have Tuesdays and Thursdays in the afternoon, and we'd like to restore weekday service, if possible. And that's really the thrust of the funding request, is so we could get that type of service. Not everyone can come on a Saturday.
All right, thank you very much. If you have no other question, appreciate your work.
We appreciate your work.
Community, community definitely needs it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are, who do we have here next?
Next is Armenian Relief Society of Western USA Inc. for the Community Outreach Program. Please state your name for the record and speak into the mic. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Rosanna McCaristian, and I'm the Financial Controller of the Armenian Relief Society of Western USA Social Services. Our agency is requesting CDBG funding from the city of Glendale in the amount of $138,847 for the 2024-2025 fiscal year for our community outreach program, which is targeted at servicing low, moderate-income residents of the city of Glendale, including senior citizens, disabled adults primarily with limited English language capability. Our funding request is to provide... Our funding request is to provide English-as-a-second-language skills classes for 120 senior citizens to improve their English language proficiency, job search assistance, referrals, and employment placement for 100 clients to help gain or regain employment, and as well as senior services for disabled for 160 clients with public services in the forms of case management, access and linkages to public benefits, assistance with housing, transportation, telecommunication, and utility issues, and more. The mission of our organization is to work toward improving the standard of living of individuals and families in need and to help meet their social needs. The target population consists of an underserved population of low-income individuals with limited English language proficiency. Our program meets the 2024-2025 CDBG program priorities in the areas of senior services, employment services, and services for disabled. Our close partnership within the local community has continued throughout the years with the City of Glendale alongside with other local organizations, including Ascensia, Catholic Charities, Verdugo Job Centers, the Glendale Youth Allowance, local hospitals, community centers, and more. With 44 years of service, our organization is able to meet the immediate public social services needs of a diverse population through our program, and our priority goal remains to assist our community members in becoming self-sufficient and productive members of society. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Questions? Anyone? Mr. Arminian?
Can you, first of all, you might need to bring the mic down a little bit so we can hear you better. In the last year, first of all, ARS does a great job overall, but I just wanted to get your sense of, in the last year, have you seen any sort of changes in terms of the types of needs for the clients that you serve? Like, are you seeing any sort of shifts?
Yes, the number have increased because first refugees are entering to the country, and a lot of forms requirement for public benefits to apply or in overall case management services are increased. And by the number of, the rent increased, we have a lot of clients actually who are coming to us more and need more services with applying for Section 8 programs or open house, any enrollment if there are any. And recently, there are two buildings are opening for low-income 62-plus residents, and we have a lot of clients for that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manukian.
Thank you. I note that your total project cost is $159,590, and you're asking to, CDBG to fund 87% and leveraging 13%. My question is, in the prior years, we had, in the previous year, we had funded $60,000. Can you tell us how much, either by percentage or the actual dollars, what was the cost of this same program in the last year? And how much were you able to leverage?
So this current proposal is for two FTE employees. And with the $60,000, we could only hire one FTE. That's going to, that's the difference where, that's why we're asking $138,000 this year.
So last year, because you were only funded 60, you had the one FTE?
60, we had to adjust accordingly, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Arnebian?
I really appreciate the work you guys do. You said the number of people who are applying because of the immigrants are increasing. Are you adding more staff beside that one? How's your staffing going?
Yes, currently, we have 18 programs in the ARS Social Services. And by adding numbers and programs to our organization, it is also helping to serve the community.
And you mentioned about the housing that is coming up, 60 some. I know that's a state-funded program, if I'm not mistaken, so it's wide open to not necessarily Glendale residents.
It is, but mostly our customers are Glendale residents.
All right, thank you.
Any other question?
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of quick questions. I mean, I see in your budget and expenses, the fundings, basically, you're telling us that this program, I'm looking like under the insurance, the cost-wise, you're telling us there is a $4,500 cost, $4,550 cost on the insurance, the total for the project, and $3,100 is going to go exactly for this project, and the rest of it, you're putting it out of your pocket. I mean, you have insurance, this is, what kind of insurance? This is a personal liability insurance?
It's the umbrella, umbrella, crime, and cyber insurance.
Umbrella, okay. Yeah, but you use this insurance, so-called, not just for this program. You use it for entire groups?
No, not for this, yes. And it is charged by the cost allocation by FTEs working on a program.
I see. Okay, so my question is just answered it, that this is not just for this specific program. Do you have it under the budget of this program?
The total insurance is more higher than the $4,550.
I understand. So you have it under this program specifically for these dollar amounts? So that's why I'm asking the question?
For the FTEs working on a program.
Yeah. Well, same thing with the other expenses, to me, is a little bit... All right, thank you very much. If there's no other question, I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Do we have Catholic charities here? I believe we do.
Yes, next is Catholic Charities of Los Angeles for the Loews and Fishes Program. As a reminder, please state your name for the record and speak into the mic. Thank you.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
My name is Sandra Inez, as mentioned, with Catholic Charities of Los Angeles. I'm here this morning with...
Please move the mic a little bit closer, or you come closer to the mic.
There we go. I'm here this morning with Isabel Gregorian, our program manager for the Glendale facility. As you know, Catholic Charities does a lot of things and a lot of part of the counties. Here in Glendale, we are dedicated to primarily homeless prevention. And as many of you know, most of our clients and many of us are really just one big bill away from becoming homeless. And the reality is that those are the individuals that we are caring for these days. I don't know if there's any questions from the committee about what we do, but at this point in time, what we're looking for are for those individuals that help those people that we're looking for funding for. So at this time, we are looking for case management funding. Those case managers are those individuals that help those folks that are suffering from possibly becoming homeless. And today, we're seeking funding for those people that are helping out. I don't know if there's any questions from the committee at this point with regards to what we do or our funding?
Questions? Ms. Manukian?
Thank you. I see that part of the funding that you're seeking is for a portion of the regional director. Can you explain what region we're talking about? What geographic area we're talking about that person covers?
Well, so the portion of like what we're asking for is for the time spent in Glendale. But the region really covers all of the San Fernando Valley up through Lancaster.
And is the amount that you're asking for a percentage of the region? Or how did you arrive at what portion of the regional director's salary to request from the City of Glendale?
Yeah, it truly is time spent with the program. So we have a very limited amount of staffing. So I do spend a significant of time, a significant amount of time here in the city, either attending meetings or overseeing the program. So that's why there was a request for funding for that.
Thank you.
Any other question? Ms. Manukian?
We have a pretty big gap between what we can, what we have to work with and the requests. So I know you say your minimum is $67,000 for this program, but what's your real minimum?
I mean, I'm not going to lie, it has been a tough year. I mean, for everybody, I'm sure. But I mean, we did put that number down because, obviously, we'd love a couple hundred thousand, but we know that's not a reality. We would love if we could actually get to maybe like $55,000 is where we would like to land, if at all possible. We're honored and blessed with anything that the council can do at this point. But this past year, that's including this year, has been a challenge for us.
Okay, just so you know, we have $255,000 to work with across everyone's requests, which is very little, unfortunately, for the amazing work that all the agencies, including yourselves, do. So appreciate your understanding, wherever we may land on this issue eventually at the end of today. But please don't take any of our funding decisions as a reflection of value because we know how valuable everyone's work is, including Catholic charities. So appreciate the work that you do. But we'll have to kind of see what we can do with the amount that we have to work with.
We understand, we appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other question, Mr. Adaxony?
Just a clarifying question. I know originally you had put minimum of 67. Right now, you just said 55 would be the lowest you can go, if I understood correctly. Would that impact the number served if we were to?
Absolutely.
Okay, so your number served right now would be 80 with the minimum of 67. So you would say that that would have to come down?
I mean, it would certainly depend on funding. But as you know, over the past, I mean, I don't know how many years, but a minimum of six years, we have exceeded our numbers. Even today, at this point, we're exceeding our quarterlies. So I mean, yes, we gave that number. We always make every effort to exceed it. But we were trying, we're always trying to be conservative, though we understand that, you know, numbers are also an issue with the funding. But I don't perceive us not hitting close to those numbers.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Mr. Arnebian?
Just one quick question is, I don't know if I read it correctly. So the amount of dollar that you're requesting covers 70% of the program manager and case manager?
Yes, correct.
That's what it is. So the funding mainly goes for the management. 70% of it goes towards the management to cover 70% of the expenses of the management?
Towards our staff. I don't know if it's...
Towards the staff, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
We're at point, you're ahead of schedule. What do we have here? Door of Hope here?
Yes, Door of Hope, DV, Mental Health, and Case Management. Again, as a reminder, please state your name for the record and speak into the mic.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for hearing our proposal. My name is Griffin Hattelstad. I'm the Director of Program Operations here representing Door of Hope. We're presenting our proposal for domestic violence, mental health, and case management services. This is an existing program that's been funded for several years, and we appreciate your support with that programming. This program will serve approximately 22 survivors of domestic violence and 10 of their children, so 32 individuals total, all of whom are residents of our Glendale Local Domestic Violence Transitional Housing Site. And with that, I'll hand it off to my colleague Regina to talk about our programming.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Regina Williams, and I'm the Chief Program Officer at Door of Hope. We are currently running, operating four transitional housing sites, with one of them being here in Glendale. And for that site, we serve up to 14 families, single moms with kids who are all homeless as a result of domestic violence. We provide intensive services, including case management, and we say client-centered case management because we want those families to determine what their goals are and then meet those goals. We also offer life skill classes where we cover topics such as budgeting, parenting, anger management, because we really want to address the barriers that kind of led to the family experience and homelessness in the first place. And then we also offer mental health services, individual counseling for adults and for the children. I just want to just share a few of our stats from 2023. 78% of our residents were able to increase their income. That is just a combination of factors. One is obviously the intensive case management, but we also have a job and career program where we're really working to try to help families improve their income. We've been able to provide educational scholarships for those wanting to go back to school or just career development and planning for families who are working a job or really want to move into a career. 92% have shown improved mental health, and then 91% of our children improve their social economic... Excuse me, I always get that mixed up. Social emotional outcomes. So I'm going to turn it back over to my colleague, Griffin.
All right, thank you. I'll just give a very brief overview of our budget. I know you all likely have that in front of you, but the total cost to run this program is about $540,000. We're only requesting $70,000 with this proposal. The breakdown of that $70,000 is $25,000 for staffing costs for our onsite therapist, providing the mental health services funded by this program. $5,000 of that would be for the Transitional Housing Program Manager. $10,000 of that would be for the lead case manager, who in turn supervises the $20,000 total for salary of two separate case managers under that lead case manager's supervision. Then finally, we have $2,000 for telephone and internet service and $8,000 for gas, electric, water, and trash service. 100% of those telephone, internet, and utilities costs directly support this program. And the staffing costs that I mentioned, all of those would only fund services provided directly to this program, but we have not included all of the costs in this proposal. We are leveraging some funds to support the remainder. So with that, I'd like to open it up to any questions you might have.
Thank you.
I have a question. I don't know if this is something you can explain here, but based on our chart, the outcomes from the last funding year, it was stated that of the 32 adults, 24 participants or 75% will report improved mental health. And the outcome that I'm looking at says two out of the 24, which is 8%. And I'm wondering if this is a mistake, confusion, or if it's something that can be explained?
Sure, so I don't have the cumulative total for this, but my guess is with that two out of 24 number, that that's just the quarterly result, that only two...
Two quarters.
Two quarters, correct. And could you confirm that's for last quarter, correct, that you're looking at?
Well, I think it's first two quarters included.
Vice Chair, Manukian, Members of the Advisory Committee. This is for the mid-year report from July 1st through December 31st of 2023.
Perfect, so yes, then the two out of 24 here is that two participants completed the program during that half of the term, and those two increased their mental health. But that's not out of 24 served, that's out of our total goal. Typically, what we have is we have a large influx of new data at the very end of the program in quarter four because participants' outcome data is only gathered when they either move out of the program or at the end of the funding term. So this two number reflects only those participants who have exited the program.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Garibian?
I see the four foundations. Are these annually, continuously, or they're consistent, I assume?
The leveraged funds?
Right.
Yes, those are steady funds. And I can also tell you that those foundation partners are a huge part of our support, but the vast majority of our funding actually comes from individual donors. It's somewhere in the neighborhood.
That was my next question, which is private donations and unrestricted grants. I wish you had it separated. How much of it is grants, do you know?
I would guess that of that total, probably fifteen to twenty percent is from those foundations.
From the three hundred and eighty thousand that you have unrestricted grants and private donations. Any other state or government grants you're getting?
Sure. So we receive some government grants. I believe we're up to nine now. We have two through LA County in conjunction with Supervisor Barker's office. And then we have some homelessness prevention funding that's coming through the City of Pasadena. We just signed contracts, or not signed contracts, but we're awarded HAP and Measure H funding through the City of Glendale. So some government grants. But the vast majority of that individual donation comes from an approach where we're seeking three-year pledges to kind of boost the sustainability of that giving. And we have a very high rate of actual follow-through on those pledge payments, too.
Look, because I did some kind of a research, too, for mental health grants, just for California. There is lots of them out there.
Sure.
There is a lot of funding, especially from state levels and down for mental health, so.
We're actually in the process now of doing just that. We're looking to partner with the CalAim program and tap into some of those services that are funded through Medi-Cal.
Thank you.
Armenian.
Two questions. Do you get CDBG funding from other government jurisdictions? Or is it just Glendale?
Just Glendale currently. We have received CDBG funding through Pasadena in the past, but not currently.
Okay. And then second question has to do with coordination. You're not the only one of the agencies that's working in this issue area. Do you do any sort of coordination with the others that also have programs?
Yes, we actually give priority to the residents or participants of the YWCA in here in Glendale. Sixty percent of our families in this shelter come from there, and we work closely with those shelters.
Okay. Is that the only other partner, or are there others?
There are other partners, but we definitely try to prioritize working here. But we've worked with other domestic violence shelters. Most of our participants come from some type of emergency shelter, DV shelter.
And then do you also work with Glendale Police Department?
Not as much. We've had to call them just on rare occasions when we've had an incident. They know us, they're aware of us, but we don't work as much. That's usually work that happens in the emergency shelters. Once families come to us, they're more stabilized in terms of, you know, they had a chance to break from their abuser, and now they're just working on getting stable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Question? Anybody else? Questions? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for your great work. Keep on doing it, regardless what you get. All right, I think we're good for now. We're ahead of schedule. We can take a break. It's ten twenty-six right now. Let's take a break for the next fifteen minutes until our next applicant comes in. So we're on a break till next fifteen minutes. Thank you. To continue our interviews, our next organization here is Intervention Prevention Clinical Group Counseling. Castles, please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you? Thank you again for the opportunity. I feel like I've done this many times, and most of you are familiar with the program, but it's always a good opportunity to speak about it, especially now. I mean, I think post-pandemic, the need for mental health services at school sites is so, so important.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Would you please state your name for the record?
I'm sorry. Arsina Hovanisian.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. I feel like our program, the Intervention Prevention Clinical Group Counseling, is a built-in intervention program, mental health service, school-site-based during school hours, which makes a big difference for families. If the parents had to take their children for intervention services after school hours, that's often very difficult for parents. And this is a great way to tackle the issues during school hours for a very minimal fee. I mean, for them, it's free, but on our end, it really like, if you do the math, it comes out to like maybe ten dollars a child. So we've had great progress throughout the years. We've been doing this for many years, as you know, and we hope to continue the program. If you have any questions for me, I think you know, if, do you want me to talk more specifically about the program? Or I think, I think most of you know about it already.
I think we are familiar with the program and what we're doing. Do we have any questions? Mr. Garibian and Mr. Armenian?
Hello.
Hi.
Welcome back. Just quickly, with this budget you submitted, I want to very double-check. How many schools?
We, our proposal is for four schools.
Your proposal is for a school. And last year was also four?
Yes, but we were funded for two.
You were funded for two, okay. Has the cost gone up? Has changed?
A little bit, as everything, at this point, per school, we're looking at sixteen thousand, eight hundred. Of course, that still includes all the leveraged costs on our end.
So back to if it's a funding issue, and if we want to fund, we should consider sixteen thousand, eight hundred per school. So if I do either one or thirty-two thousand change, then three thousand, four hundred?
Yes.
In that range, we'll take care of the numbers.
Yes.
That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Armenian?
I defer Mr. Garibian asked my question. Thank you.
Okay. Question? Sure.
Thank you so much. I know this is very valuable work that you're doing. What happened last year when we funded only two schools? Were you able to find the additional funding? Did you actually offer it in the other two schools? Or it was just not offered?
It was not offered. It was offered for one semester at one school site, but not the full program. We weren't able to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garibian, you have a poll.
I'm so sorry. I asked earlier, other agencies similar with the mental health. There's so many fundings out there, and I see your budget, you're not... Are you going to apply for other government funds?
We do. We make sure that we at least get those, at least the two school sites covered and taken care of.
But that's from CDBG?
Yes. It's not as simple as...
Of course not.
It's not as simple as you think. But we also do appeal to private donors, our friends, our sponsors, to...
Because I'm looking at the budget, your PRLC fifteen thousand and CDBG sixty-seven thousand. Where is any other money?
Yeah, there is other money, but I don't know if it's included in what you see, because this is just CDBG-related.
Committee member Garibian?
Yes.
When they put in the budget, when the agency places a budget, it's for the program-specific. ASPS has a multitude of programs. I know you have many other programs that you offer. This is specific to Intervention Prevention Clinical Group Counseling program. So that's how they budgeted their...
Yeah, for that program. So you're saying hundred percent of that program comes from the PRLC and the CDBG. But you can also apply for other agencies for the same program, is what I'm trying to say.
Yes, yes.
Because I see your minutes, Mr. Gurian, every time, so we need to do fundraising. Two minutes back to back in the minute says we need to do that.
Well, we always need to do, and every nonprofit always has to do fundraising. There's no other way to sustain the programs.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Thank you for your time.
All right, we move on.
Next on the agenda is Home Again Los Angeles for the Crisis Aid for Homeless Families Program. As a reminder, please state your name for the record and speak into the mic.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Albert Hernandez, and I serve as the Chief Executive Officer at Home Again LA. First and foremost, thank you, committee members, for volunteering your time to be on this committee. City staff, thank you for your partnership throughout the many years. Here today to respectfully request twenty-five thousand dollars to support our crisis aid for homeless families project. Crisis Aid for Homeless Families is really a program that supports unhoused families here in Glendale, families with children specifically. As the lead agency here in this city of Glendale, any family with children that are experiencing homelessness are directed to Home Again LA, whether it's the Community Services and Parks Department, or the Glendale Housing Authority, or most recently, Glendale Police Department have been very active in referring families to us. Anytime a family is referred to us, the initial point of contact is with this employee that I'm seeking funding for today. This person provides assessments, does the intakes, and then makes the referrals, whether it's a referral to our own agency through any of our rapid rehousing programs or our emergency shelter. So I'm respectfully requesting those funds so that we continue providing support to those families who are seeking assistance with housing. What we're projecting is fifty households on your application. It doesn't allow me to put families. It says individuals or people, but it's actually fifty households, which is projected to be about a hundred and fifty, maybe even two hundred individuals, from infants to older adults. So that twenty-five thousand dollars will support our case manager overseeing the project. All other funds will be either provided by our general fund through our fundraising initiatives that we do throughout the year or through another government program which is based here in Glendale. And so that's my request, and I definitely would entertain any questions to follow up with that.
Questions? Go ahead.
Sorry. As far as rent, it's a big chunk, goes towards the rent. Have you guys looked into any state or county locations that they can allocate to you guys for rent-free?
Yeah, so we've been working with Glendale First Methodist Church right down the street from this location, and they've been supporting us for the last fourteen years. But with many congregations, unfortunately, many congregations are losing parishioners, and they're finding alternative ways to increase their income. So that's the purpose of why we're paying so much rent. Down the road, I'll tell you right now, we're working with the City of Burbank, actually, who has donated a fire station, which we'll be utilizing as an access center for our Glendale and Burbank families. So that's a project that will be coming to fruition in the next two years.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. No other questions? I have a quick question. I mean, we're pretty much very familiar with your program. But as you have the prevention of the homelessness or on the verge of homelessness program going forward, Catholic Charities has a similar program. So how do you collaborate with each other? Or why duplicate if we can work one agency and make it better in a way?
Yeah. Thank you for that question, Chair Avadizian. So again, we're the lead agency, so even if Catholic Charities receives a family with children in dire need of prevention funds, they're required to send them to Hala first, to our organization. What I love about the City of Glendale is that we are one of the only cities in this area that have our own continuum of care. And why I stress on that is because we do communicate very, very well. When a family with children goes to Ascensia, Ascensia knows to direct them to us. Family goes to the YWCA in need of shelter or prevention services, they know to come to us. If anything, families are referred to us first, and then once we get down to exhausting all of our funds, then we'll reach out to Catholic Charities or other organizations. But again, we are the go-to. We are the ones that are constantly being asked for support. And again, I just stress the importance of collaboration, and there is those communications with those organizations.
Thank you. One question, then I'll... Outside of, I know you're not asking for this, but I think we've asked this question before. I just don't remember it. On the rent assistance, when it comes to the security deposits, those deposits are things that comes back to you. It's not a cost-to-you one-time deal. You pay it and you're done. Those monies always revolving and coming back to you to use it for other tenants, correct?
Chair Avadizian, so I think that question stems from two years ago when I was trying to identify new ways in utilizing CDBG funds. And at that time, I had a request for funding for security deposits because there wasn't any available funds in the City of Glendale. So you're correct, we're not seeking funds for that at all through CDBG. We already have been blessed through Measure H and through the HAP funding through the Community Parks and Homeless Department. To answer your question, when we pay a security deposit on behalf of a family, that funding does not come back to Hala. The idea is that that funding stays with that family, and then once they move into, let's say, a fair market rate apartment unit, that is going with them. So it does not come back to us, nor do we make any income off of any of these programs that we operate.
Yeah, I understand you're not making an income. That's, I just couldn't remember what was the case and how that money, if it did come back or not. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair Avadizian. I just wanted to clarify something from your first question. I believe that both, that Catholic Charities is not duplicative of what Home Again LA is doing. That Catholic Charities, again, is a preventative measure. They're trying to stop homelessness by rental assistance, utility assistance. They're trying to like stop it before it happens. They are the first responder in the continuum of care, pretty much, in terms of helping the families that are already homeless. So, and I believe that it's not just homeless, it's homeless with families.
Yeah, yes, Committee Member Kianis Gaviliyan. So our priority is unhoused families. Over the last four years, though, we have been playing a little bit and dabbling with prevention services because of the pandemic. So many people are still behind on rent, even today. I mean, look at a one-bedroom apartment here in Glendale, it's about twenty-six hundred dollars, and families just can't make ends meet right now. So over the last three or four years, because of the pandemic, we have been dabbling a little bit in preventative services. But again, our first and foremost core program is helping unhoused families through our emergency shelter and then getting them housing and then making sure that they're stable.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Any questions, comments? All right. Thank you very much. Good luck, and thank you for everything you do.
Chair Avadizian, members of the Advisory Committee. We have informed our remaining agencies that we are ahead of schedule, and Glendale Youth Alliance is on their way. So we can't, we're just anticipating their arrival time at the next few minutes.
I guess we can go offline until they come back.
Okay, so we'll take a recess?
Yes.
Till they come, okay.
All right, we're back. We move on to our next interview, which is the Youth Employment, Youth Alliance. If you would, please come forward, state your name, speak closely to the mic.
Good morning. My name's Karina Gregorian. I'm with the Glendale Youth Alliance. For the past thirty years, the Glendale Youth Alliance has been providing employment programs to low-income and disadvantaged youth in our community. Currently... Currently, we operate six programs and serve up to 300 youth annually, depending on our budget. We provide wraparound services, which means that every youth that comes in has a case manager, they're provided training, supportive services, and based on their individual needs, we connect them to the resources in our community. We have been also providing housing programs, as well as hotel vouchers, to homeless youth in the past few years due to the needs of our community, our ever-changing needs. As I mentioned, we've been around for 30 years. We've touched the lives of 12,000 youth. And I can honestly say a job is probably the most important thing to change the life, the quality of life of a youth or an adult. And I can honestly say it's the best way to end homelessness. If you get them in a job, on the right path, and they're able to be self-sufficient, there's nothing greater that you can provide for a participant or a youth, or an adult for that matter. We are kindly requesting $60,000 today for the Glendale Youth Alliance to pay for staffing costs. And again, this will be for a staff member that is working on our youth employment programs. And we hope to serve additional 60 youth through our GYIP and Great Enterprise programs. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Arubian? Question?
Hello. Thank you, likewise. Well, every year, we work with new partners, so we're very involved in the community. As the needs of the youth change, we're always looking for different partners to provide different resources and leverage those funds. In the last five years, I want to say, we have been able to secure grant funds to provide hotel vouchers, so we've been working with the homeless population more than before. And it's not just providing hotel vouchers. Our hotel vouchers are for 30 to 60 days, and we also work very closely with them to find employment, to link them to either transitional or permanent housing, and connect them to any of the other resources that they need. Beyond that, GYA was recognized as community awardee with the Glendale Chamber last year and with the Glendale Latino Association. We were Organization of the Year. We were actually honored yesterday. But we're always looking for ways to expand. We have been able to secure some additional grants within the organization, so we're always trying to serve more youth, meet the needs of our youth by having the resources available, whether it's for hotel vouchers or any other supportive services.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Question?
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
I can see that this year's funding, you're requesting the $60,000 for the one FTE.
Yes.
And last year, we funded $20,000. Was that $20,000 applied to the FTE?
Yes.
And so you were able to leverage the remainder?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
But the more funding we receive, the more we're able to serve youth. If it's not staff costs, our budget is one budget. So essentially, if we're putting more funds towards staff salaries, that means we have less funds for our youth wages. So the more funding we are able to get to cover staff salaries, then it frees up other funds to serve additional youth and provide additional resources.
Thank you.
Okay. One quick question. I mean, you just said about youth salaries. Salaries that you pay and services that you provide.
Yes.
Whoever you provide the service, aren't they paying you back to a certain level? Or is that how it works? Please explain that one.
Some of the programs, yes. We do bill, if the youth is working on a private property, we do bill the customer for the youth wages. But other friends, other programs are strictly funded by grants and additional funding that we receive through fundraising efforts and so forth. So those youth are paid through GYA directly.
I see, I see. And the housing factor that you mentioned, that's just the temporary vouchers that you were talking about, the hotel vouchers and whatnot, right?
Yes, yes. Over the last three years, we've assisted over 50 youth with hotel vouchers. We have also assisted, I believe, seven youth to get the EHP vouchers, the emergency housing vouchers, which are more permanent, and allows for rental subsidies for up to, I want to say, many years. It's a long-term program. So we've been very active on that end as well.
Okay. And the youth that you're serving, are there basically, they're adult youths, 18 and up?
No, 14 to 24.
14 to 24?
Yes.
And now, if your 14-year-old comes to you and asks for housing, help for housing, are you providing housing for that individual, or is it family? How does that work?
Usually, the homeless youth we have worked for with have been 18 and over. We haven't had any minors in the past, luckily. But yes, if they do come and it is a housing, a family unit, we will definitely assist the entire family.
I see, I see. Okay, so it is youth-oriented, however, if there is a need?
Absolutely, absolutely. Anytime you work with youth, you're working with the entire family.
So most of the youth that comes to you, they do have families attached, however that is.
The younger youth, yes. The younger youth, yes. Youth 18, 19, 20, or older. Some are from out of state, they have no relatives, no parent support. Some are youth that grew up in Southern California, but again, there's no relationship with the parents, and they have no adult support in their life.
So not necessarily all the youth are Glendale residents, or has been?
Our focus is the Verdugo region, so a lot of the youth are from Glendale, but we also do serve youth from Burbank and neighboring cities as well. Some of our grants allow for greater outreach to all of Los Angeles.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. If nobody else has any questions, comments? All right. Thank you. Best of luck, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Armenian has a question to the staff.
I know in the numbers that staff shared with the committee is 255. And I think later on, we'll be discussing this, but just wanted to kind of get a little bit of perspective now, as we're looking at numbers. If additional funds come in, or could come in after this meeting, would we get back together to allocate additional funds? Or would we provisionally say any additional funds can go in the following direction? How would we handle that?
Great question. Committee member Armenian, members of the committee.
I don't think your mic's on. Is it on?
Chair Avadisian, committee member Armenian, members of the Advisory Committee. Our next report after interviews is the contingency plan. It's an action plan where you, as committee members, would decide how you want to distribute funds so you don't have to come back. So assuming we get more than $255,000, you would decide upon percentage or individual agencies that you feel are more fitting to receive additional funds just from these interviews and scoring. So you'll have a choice, but again, it goes both ways. It could be less than $255,000. So that's something you're going to have to evaluate today. This is a very unique year. We always run into these continuing resolutions with the federal government and Congress, and as of yesterday, they're still pushing it back. So the federal budget has not passed, and they're continuing to kick the can down the road, which means we won't get final allocations this year, probably, I'd say, April or May. So it would be very difficult for us to come back and regroup just for that one item. So we ask that the contingency plan be in order and in place, so you don't have to come back. Unless it's a choice, but I doubt that during the COVID period, we received millions of dollars. It's going to be either $60,000 more or $60,000 less because the budget, the overall budget is about $3.3 billion for CDBG. So we know that if we're going to get, you know, the formula, based on the formula, we're most likely going to get about $1.7 million, give or take a few thousand.
Another version of the question is, I know last year, we had organizations give money back for whatever reason. Is that also, can that also be covered in a position that we take in terms of, or would that require us to come back together and reallocate?
So for agencies that return funds, because we're discussing public social services right now, agencies that return either public social services funds or capital funds, that money will automatically go to capital funds. It's just, that's just the way the program is structured. So that being said, it would not affect this, the $255,000 would not be changed if that's what we're looking at, unfortunately, because of that 15% cap. We always have that cap to think about.
Thank you.
They won't allow more than that.
But just to follow up, so anyway, if it does, we can decide how to...
Correct.
Which we've done it in the past.
You have. You did it the year before last. So we did implement a contingency plan the year before last. And we did receive a few thousand dollars more.
Hopefully more. I'm always hoping for more money than less. We are still waiting for our next two organizations to come in. Are we, do we have any confirmation they're on their way? We should wait, or we should go to lunch? What is the direction, please?
Chair Avadisian, members of the Advisory Committee. We have been informed by the YWCA of Glendale and Pasadena that they are currently in transit, so they are on their way, but they're anticipating an arrival time of noon-ish, noon, depending on traffic. So that being said, they are going to be here, whereas Housing Rights Center will not be able to make it due to previous engagement that they have because they're in audit mode at this point.
Okay.
So they'll be here on their scheduled time. But with YWCA, they will, they will be arriving any minute. Oh. Okay, so both agencies are on their way. Did the committee like to take a quick break until they arrive?
I guess, and right after that, I guess. If they are on their way, then I would suggest that let's wait for them to come in. Let's do the interviews, and once we're done with them, then we'll go to lunch, and we'll come back and do our labration.
Maybe we can do a quick lunch, so that we can...
Yeah, we don't have to take the whole hour for lunch, if not necessarily, you know, I mean, for us. But the guys, don't forget that we have staff, that the staff has to have their right, given lunch hours that they have to take legally. We're volunteers, but the staff has to do what legally HR allows. Thank you.
So we're taking a recess.
Almost noon. We're back from break. We have our next application, Housing Rights Center. Fair Housing Services, please come forward. State your name and speak to the mic, please.
Yes, hello. I'm Chantla Almonsor. I'm the Executive Director of the Housing Rights Center. We are the nation's largest and oldest fair housing council. There are about 220 fair housing councils. We were established in 1968, the same year that the Fair Housing Act was passed, in Los Angeles, serving all of Los Angeles and county and also Ventura County residents. And we also are the HUD-qualified fair housing services provider. So we have, we contract with HUD to also be the recognized fair housing council that serves LA County and Ventura County.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone?
Just...
Go ahead.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, obviously, we're familiar with you guys every year. Just a quick question, the 4.9 million, that's for Los Angeles and Ventura County, for both counties?
That's our total budget for all of our...
For everything.
Yes, for both, mhm, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Nobody else? Anybody? Yes, go ahead.
You're welcome.
We, this is regarding the percentage of total outcomes accomplished. So we're at 50% with regards to the first HRC, which is, you know, hosting two of the Housing Rights Workshops. But for the second outcome, the sub-recipient would file seven fair housing complaints. We're at 0%. And I just wondered if you had any type of insight that would help us understand?
So I met with staff yesterday. I know we have three right now that we're working on, so we do have some currently. So we anticipate, we usually make that number, I think we did 10 last year. Sometimes it takes, if we started, it takes a few months to investigate it and to fully, you know, I'll just give one example. It may be, it may be a person calling saying that they think that because they have children, the landlord won't want to rent to them, or denied their rental application because they have children. So in that situation, we may have to wait for a vacancy in the apartment so we can try to investigate it, send somebody else in. Otherwise, it wouldn't make any sense. Like, why would somebody be calling management to ask, do you take children in the apartment if there's nothing available? So sometimes it does take a few months to kind of wait for that to happen and to go back again, to make sure it sustains, make sure it wasn't just like, you know, to really make sure that, to see if there was actual discrimination from happening. So, and often, also, we resolve many more complaints at the initial level as well. So it won't turn into an actual discrimination complaint because we've been able to answer the tenant's question over the phone and say, you have a right to a reasonable accommodation. Give your landlord a letter asking for, you know, the ability to have, you know, park your car here instead of there, for example, and then we'll send them a template of that letter, and then it resolves it right then and there. So to some degree, it's a little bit of the situation of our success, to some degree, because it's not like things aren't happening and people aren't requesting, you know, reasonable accommodation requests. That's obviously happening. But, you know, we do have, we do have a great degree of recognition, thankfully, from landlords as well. So when they get a letter from us that says, you really need to provide this reasonable accommodation, it's usually granted.
A victim of your success.
Yeah, a victim of your success, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, question? Go ahead, please.
Regarding the CDBG versus percentage leveraged funds, I note that from what I see, it says that the CDBG portion is less than half a percent. But then the percentage leveraged is 98.78%. I want to make sure those numbers are correct because they don't add up to 100.
There's like a couple of percentage points off there, yeah. I can't speak off the top of my head about that, but we could definitely, like, send something to clarify if that's requested, I could do that, to clarify the budget.
Well, based on what you can tell us right now, is it a fair assessment that what you're requesting from CDBG is less than half a percentage?
Definitely, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? No? Be shy? You have time? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in earlier than you're scheduled. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, and thank you also for recognizing...
Good luck for everything you do.
Yeah, and thank you for recognizing fair housing as well. Thank you. Just one little quick thing, April is National Fair Housing Month. Some cities do do proclamations to recognize Fair Housing Month. So just to consider, if you do do city proclamations, that National Fair Housing Month is one to recognize. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll pass that on to the city council.
Yeah, thank you.
Chair Avadisian, members of the Advisory Committee. YWCA is actually looking for parking right now, so they should be up here in the next two minutes.
Beautiful, thank you. We'll just wait a couple of minutes, and we'll move on. Thank you. Thank you.
Maggie, would you, could we go out of order and, of course, if Chair Avadiscian is okay with that, and do the contingency report while we wait? That's one last report you'll have to do after lunch.
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, yeah, let's do that. Let's move forward, and then we'll come back to the agency once they get here. That's fine.
Okay, so just to read it into the record, that would be item 5C, approving a CDBG contingency funding plan. At one would be a motion providing direction to staff on a CDBG contingency funding plan for public social services.
Chair Avadiscian, members of the advisory committee, as we had mentioned earlier, we will be required to have a CDBG contingency funding plan this year, due to the fact that the federal budget has not been passed, therefore, we don't have our final allocation numbers for the committee to make final numbers on, basically to make recommendations on. We're continuing, we are currently operating on a continuing resolution, and traditionally, our final funding allocations are released mid-February. So when we come to this particular meeting and the meeting on Monday, we have numbers that are concrete for you. Administratively, it's challenging to return back to the committee and the city council and housing authority without those final numbers. Therefore, we have options for consideration. So staff is requesting direction from the committee to allocate either the excess funds or reduction in allocation, just based on the final funding allocation amounts. And there are three available options to consider. First option would be to proportionately and equally increase or decrease the recommended funding for each program funded, so across the board. Second, you could identify a set of percentage, identify a set percentage to increase or decrease from specific programs recommended for funding. Or third, identify a specific program recommended for funding to increase or decrease. So those are three options to consider when you deliberate and make funding recommendations today. That ends my...
That was the report. Thank you very much. I'll take, I'll take any questions? Anyone has any questions? If not, motion, question?
Question, yeah. So this is specifically when the actual budget number comes in, and it's that amount?
Okay, correct. So committee member Armenian, today's motion and what you all decide as a committee, staff will take that into consideration when we get our final allocations. We will include that in the final action plan. So we will include the numbers as you had requested, based on what you decide today.
Okay. Mr. Garibian?
Yeah, so some of these, well, depends what numbers are, we come to a conclusion today that could change either, you know, which route to go.
That's a good, that's a good way of looking at it, committee member Garibian, and I'll tell you why. Two years ago, you made your, the motion was made after deliberation and recommendations, because sometimes what you do is you see where you're going with it, and then you drill it down and then make that decision. So it is up to you to make that decision later. Is that okay? Ms. Iris?
I would, thank you for the explanation and answers. I think, as of right now, based on what budget is presented, what we have, financial dollars and what the applicants are requesting, and the balance and the difference of it, I think it's pretty much easy, not easy, but it's doable that we can make the suggestion right now, as we've started this, get a motion and move forward. I think it would not change anything if we do it after the, looking at all the numbers and getting, you know, all the numbers done. I would, if, normally, I would go with the committee, what they say, I would suggest that to, to go with a certain percentage of increase or decrease, either whatever numbers comes in. However, I would also put it there that any increase or any decrease not to go any lower than $10,000 amount. So if there are any decreases that will bring the dollar, whatever is given to any of the organizations, anything less than $10,000, if it makes that funding $10,000 or less, then that organization will not get the cut. That's what I'm trying to say. If anything more, of course, anything more is fine, but anything less than, if they cuts them under $10,000, then that organization will not get that cut. Equally...
Make that a motion?
I would, yeah.
I'm okay with that.
I want to make a comment about that before we vote.
Sure.
In theory, I'm okay with that. However, my own numbers have more than one at 10,000, which would mean that if there's a decrease, we're only decreasing on, you know, handful or whatever is remaining. So I would like us to maybe decide this after the final numbers, and we see how many are at the 10,000 mark. Because I agree, under 10,000, based on staff's comments, we should not be decreasing because it's just not worth it. But our opinion of what you've suggested might change when we see how many we have under 10,000 and try to figure out a different way. I mean, at 10,000, yes, sorry.
Is everybody at least okay with the percentage to be one of them, and then we'll consider the 10,000 or not?
And I guess at this point, since that's the direction or that's the will of the committee, I guess we'll have to, oh, sure, sorry.
How, the difference between proportionally and equally increase or decrease, depending on the actual funding, and identifying a set percentage, how are you going to, what's the criteria? I just wondered, how will you identify that set percentage?
It's up to us to give a direction to the staff, whatever way we want it. We want to give them a dollar amount, you could tell them, okay, $500 if the numbers, but we don't know the numbers. So we're just giving them whatever extra numbers or less dollars we get, we're going to take, the staff will take that number, and based on how many applicants we have, which right now it's 11, so based on those 11, that the increase or decrease will deduct equally. However, if there are organizations that they've received, or we have suggested $10,000, minimum, at least $10,000, they have only $10,000 that we're offering, then those organizations will come out of that pot, and the rest of the organizations that they're receiving, plan to be received more than $10,000, will decreases...
Equally.
Equally on that five, say, five organizations, six, whatever the number is. The decrease will come from those that receive over $10,000. But the increase will receive to all 11 organizations.
Okay, so is it, is it a form of number one then, and not a set percentage? It's a form of the proportionally and equally...
Correct.
Okay, increase, and then only decrease proportionally the rest, with the exception of the $10,000 awardee.
Creating a floor of 10,000.
Okay. Okay. I would like to offer a clarification, because now I'm more confused. So...
I'm good with that.
We have, we have currently $255,000 that we're dealing with. And are you suggesting that we take, we extrapolate the percentage of each organization's approved amount from the 255? So let's say that they're at 25,000, and we'll say, okay, so you're getting 10%. And if there is an extra funding or less funding, then they get 10%? Or are you taking 11 organizations and dividing the 100% by 11?
Exactly. That's...
I would be more...
If it's, if it's a plus, if we have more money than 255,000, then that the plus will go to all 11 organizations.
Equally.
Equally.
I think my...
If, should, less than 250,000, only the less equally will come out of the organizations that they received more than $10,000. So the base number will always stay at the 10,000.
I agree with that portion of it, but I think that I, proportionate seems more fair to me, because if we thought that in our pot of 255,000, a certain organization should get, because we're not spreading the 255 equally among the 11 organizations. So if we're valuing that program at a certain percentage out of the whole, I think that the increase or decrease should be commensurate with that percentage out of the whole. So I'm more inclined towards proportional rather than a straight percentage across the board.
I agree with that.
But I agree with the 10,000 minimum. I think that's...
I agree with your suggestion, and I understand what you're saying, but what I'm trying to do is to make the life easier on the staff level, so they don't have to go and, one by one, calculate the percentage and add on, or deduct and add to that percentage. So it's easier for them, just take that, the whole number, divide it, or whatever, between that 10, 11, or whatever group is, the number is. That's what I'm trying to do, to just make it easier, instead of for them to sit down and calculate every single one of them, and dollar, percentage-wise, maybe, you know, it'll be $5, $10 difference, $20 difference, up and down, or $100, I don't know, whatever the number might be.
Chair Avadiscian, members of the committee, if I may recommend, if you guys are going to, if the committee's going to wait till the end of, at the end, for deliberation to make that decision, it might make it easier for you, once you've made the decision, to then look at it and say, and you might just, at the end, end up saying, you know what, we really would like to fund this particular program a little bit more, and maybe it is best to put the whole amount versus a percentage. Like, depending on what you deliberate, it really might change your opinion. So if you're not going to make a decision right now, if I may recommend, why don't we take the interview, and then you guys can come back and make that decision at the end? So then, maybe with final numbers to look at, some of the committee members might want to change their opinion of which of the options is best. So if you wouldn't, if you're okay with that, maybe we could listen to the interview, take the next interview, and then you guys could deliberate afterwards.
I agree with that also, but since we had opened up the item, said, let's finish it up, so at least I know one of our committee members has to leave pretty early before we finish, finish up, so I wanted that committee member to be involved in that conversation also, in that decision-making. So it's the will of the committee, whatever you guys want, we can give the direction to move on. Yes.
I think after listening to and considering all that, I'm thinking to go towards the equally increase or decrease, as long as it doesn't drop below 10,000. I think that should make it so much easier. It won't be fair to the larger ones because of the decrease versus the $10,000 ones, in the case of decrease. But at the same time, I think that makes it less, I think I'll go towards that direction, equally increase or decrease.
You want to make a motion?
I'm willing to make that motion, to go with equally increase or decrease, unless, if it's 10,000 during, at the case of decrease, not to decrease under 10,000.
Committee member Garibian and committee member Gabrillian, if I may, please take into consideration that Housing Rights Center should be omitted from that list, because they will automatically receive $10,000 in funding.
Yes.
If we can add that to the motion.
Right, we don't drop the 10,000.
Okay. So maybe against the 10 organizations instead of 11?
As many that we recommend.
As many that it's, that's the staff portion of it, so the staff can manage that.
Well, we'd like, it needs to be in the motion.
Yeah, that's fine, so you want me to read the motion? So we go with equally increase or decrease. However, when it's a decrease, and the recommendation is 10,000, not to drop below 10,000, and housing rights is exempt from this.
Second motion.
Motion, a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Committee members, Armenian.
Yes.
Garibian.
Yes.
Iniones Gabrillian.
Yes.
Vice Chair Manukian.
No.
And Chair Avadiscian.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our last organization. Can we go back to interviews and read in the record?
Sure. The last agency is YWCA of Glendale and Pasadena for the Mental Health Services for Survivors of Domestic Violence Program.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming in earlier than you were scheduled in a rush. Please come forward, speak to the mic, speak your, just announce your name.
Thank you so much to the esteemed members of the CDBG Advisory Council, to the City of Glendale, for the continued partnership and support of the YWCA Glendale and Pasadena Mental Health Program for the survivors of domestic violence and their children. My name is Lisa Hershmarin. I'm the chief operating officer, and with me today, I have Nicole Cherry, who is the leader and the head of our mental health department at the YWCA.
Okay, you wanted to give us a little bit of a sum of your program, what you're asking for and why?
Yes. So we have the privilege of serving Glendale with, for the survivors of domestic violence and their children, with mental health services that are trauma-informed and evidence-based, and have proven outcomes of reducing depression and anxiety. And we have various methods in our practices that are not usually offered to this population, including a practice called EMDR, including art therapy, including other practices of mental health that, that really have proven to make great advances and strives in healing for survivors of domestic violence, of intimate partner violence. And I'm going to turn it over to Nicole to tell you a little bit more about that, and then I'll tell you about our proposal.
Hello, good afternoon. Thank you for having us. So as Lisa mentioned, we, we have, because of your generosity, we have been able to train our mental health staff in the EMDR practice, which is evidence-based, which has shown to reduce the impact of trauma, which all of the survivors of domestic violence and intimate partner violence do experience, as well as their children. So this is an invaluable resource for the participants that receive it, as well as the therapists that are able to, to provide this in the community. It is about $200 a session if you go to a therapist for EMDR. We are providing that, again, because of your generosity, free of any fee for the participants that come through our doors. In addition, we also have added to our proposal this year, we want to show by providing a pre and post surveys to the participants before they enter into any therapy, individual or group therapy with our therapists. And we give them a couple of questionnaires. One is called the Patient Health Questionnaire, and that measures depression symptoms. And the other one is called the Generalized Anxiety Disorder Scale, and that is also given to our participants and the children. And so we want to show the committee our, the impact of the treatment that we are providing for them, again, based on your generosity. And so that is something that we've added to the proposal this year. If you all want to have more information on that, I can go through any of them, but for the sake of time, I don't have to. But, yeah.
Thank you. Our proposal primarily is, has been for the funding of team members, of the actual practitioners, our clinical case manager, and our clinical team, our support... practitioners, our, our clinical case manager and, and our clinical team, our support team that actually provides the services. Eighty for, 85% of our budget goes for our team members that without, we wouldn't be able to provide services. And we also leverage $40,000 from other places in order to leverage therapy in Armenian and other interventions that also supplement our services for our survivors. And it wouldn't be possible, and one thing that we know about domestic violence survivors is without this critical mental health care, without this critical social services, our survivors wouldn't be able to get transitional housing. They wouldn't be able to be functioning, gaining their stability, reestablishing and transforming their lives. And we're trying to ensure that there, that they prevent, that is prevented their homelessness, that they have a, a way forward in the transformation of their lives. And without that support, without that trauma informed care that is interwoven into their support, we have really found that that won't be possible, which is why this funding is so critical and especially supporting and undergirding the foundation of funding our team members and our staff that provide the direct service.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody has any questions? Mr. Armenian.
You weren't here for the 10 other times we asked this question, which is even with the minimums that we asked for, we don't have enough money for, to meet the minimums of the organizational requests. So your minimum is 46,000 approximately?
Yes.
What would be the impact of less than 46,000?
The impact would be that, that we would have to possibly reduce staff and reduce, right now, we have one paid clinical case manager that's serving a caseload of over 50 participants with E M D R and with other needed mental health supports. And we don't have a source to fund that position. So it would mean that we would have to potentially lay off that position.
That's currently in place.
That's currently in place and it's been in place for three years.
Thank you.
Mr. Marigan, Mrs. Marigan?
As a follow up and a request for clarification, so prior couple of years, you received around 25,000 from the C D B G. So how has not receiving more than 25 limited what you've been doing? Because I'm kind of confused, this one person that you can, you may potentially have to lay off, the prior years funding, was it funding the same person?
Yes, it definitely was funding the same person and we, and again, the, the majority of this funding from C D B G has, has undergirded the majority of being able to do this. We, the domestic violence programs are facing and have been facing 40% cuts from Volka and Vawa, the, the Victims of Crime and the Violence Against Women Act. And because of those funding cuts, there, it's, it's been increasingly difficult to produce funding in these areas to support the staffing. And so with, with dwindling government funding, we have been really doing our best with foundations and individual giving to make up braided funding in order to make sure that these, our staffing is number one. We do direct services first and foremost. And when we train our, our, our staff, making sure that that investment stays continuous, especially as we train other ones. Something that's beautiful about our program is that Nicole oversees our internship program. And so we have, we have interns that, that work with us, that, that are able to see the, the participants as well. So with this braided funding, we've been able to support this clinical case manager of any of the gaps that we have, but the gaps are widening, given the, the girth of, of funding that, that we're facing now. And so that's why the ability to, to, to fill in those gaps is getting increasing and more increasingly difficult, as, as I've heard you discussing too, discussing these cuts, it's, it's, it's really everywhere. And, and that's why we have been so appreciative and thankful that, that C D B G has been so supportive of, of our mental health program. So that's.
Thank you. Mr. Garibian.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you so much.
So you're going to cut that one individual, that means the program will go away? I mean, you have 46,024 clinical case manager.
No, 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 no.
So what happens if you?
The program, the program, we, we, the program would not go away. Our mental health program won't go away, but the C G B funding, it, it primarily funds our clinical case manager and that is the primary bulk of her, of her, of her salary. And so that would be detrimental to the, one of the key staff members that run the program.
Okay, so the, the case manager remains if you don't get the funding or?
Well, that's, that's one of the challenges that we are coming up against is if we don't get the funding, then we don't, we don't have currently the funding to backfill that outcome. And so, yeah, the potential is that we would have to downsize the program and see fewer participants with her departure.
Without a case manager?
Without the clinical case manager, yes.
All right, thank you.
Is there anything else?
Anybody else? I have one quick question. The E D M R training, is this for one person or is it a group that has the training?
It's, it's a group for every year that we have, the, the mental health staff, they're trained every year. So whenever we have a new set of interns, for example, then they get the E M D R trained to provide it to the participants. So right now, my, my paid staff, we have two. One is the bilingual Armenian speaking therapist that we are able to fund through another grant and the clinical case managers. Those are only two paid staff. The rest are interns who are grad school and I supervise them and they are, and everyone on staff has received the E M D R training. But we only have those two paid staff positions for the mental health team.
Every year you, you do the, you go through the training for everyone, new and old, basically, right?
I, I have had it myself, yes, as well.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Anybody else has any questions? No? All right, again, thank you very much for everything you do. Appreciate your time. Appreciate that you had to change your schedule and run here faster than, earlier than what you had to do, so, or was planned to. But thank you very much and.
We deeply appreciate you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Have a great rest of the day. All right. What's next? Lunch break? Yes, okay. We take, what time is it now? It's 12:30, 34, we take a lunch break, 30 minutes, is it good, everybody? So we'll be, we'll be back here 1:05, 30 minutes lunch. Thank you. We're back on, okay? Good afternoon. We're back on our C D B G special meeting, reviewing social services applications. And we are back to looking in the applications and making our suggestions, funding suggestions and directions to the council. So anyone has any suggestions or with the numbers? Anybody is ready to talk about the numbers or how do you want to do it?
I'm ready to go if, since, just in case I end up having to leave early, because I do have to leave at 2:00. So if I could just give the numbers and then hopefully I'll be here for the whole, hopefully we'll get this done by 2:00, but apologize if I have to leave before we're done.
Okay, you want to start, Mr. Armenian?
Yeah, so A S A, and hopefully these numbers match, but we can adjust it.
I'm ready. I'm ready.
Okay. A S A 10. Bar 20. A R S 70. Essentia 15. Catholic Charities 21. CASP 34. Door of Hope 20. Glendale Youth 20. Home Again 15. Housing Rights 10. I originally had, this is the one I'll just qualify, I originally had Y W C A at 20, but I'm really torn once we interviewed them, frankly, because of the repeated answers they gave to us, which is if you get less than your minimum, you're going to lay off the staff, which then leads me to think they can't do the program. So I guess for now, just to make the numbers work, put in 20, but I'd like to have that conversation when we get to all the other numbers. Because maybe if, 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 if there's consensus where we zero it out, then maybe I would probably shift that money to Catholic charities.
Anybody else wants to go? Ready?
Yeah, I'll go.
Go ahead.
So I got A S A at 10, the Armenian bar at $21,265. A R S at 60. Essentia at 10. Catholic Charities at 40. CASP at $33,735. Door of Hope 15. Glendale Youth Alliance 10. Home Again 10. Housing Rights 10. And the Y W C A at 35.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Gabrielian or?
I have, I have it in the different, oh, I have it in the other order. So Essentia at 20. I have the Pro Bono Armenian Bar Association at 20. I've got the STEM Academy at 12. I've got the Armenian Relief Services at 53. I've got the Catholic Charities at 35. I've got the CASP at 16. I have the Door of Hope at 20. Oops, there we go. I've got the Home Again Los Angeles at 15. Glendale Youth Alliance at 15. The Housing Rights Center at 10. And the Y W C A at 39. Does that add up? Okay.
It does.
Thank you.
Wow. Mr. Garibian?
My eyes are so bad, I'm just trying to see that small fine print, so. All right. I'm going to start, obviously, as my colleague mentioned, the Y W C A answer that on their budget, they have clinical case manager for the $6,020. And I asked them twice and if we don't fund them the minimum, they said they're going to have to eliminate that person's position. So if you do eliminate, how are you going to run the program? I never got the answer to that. So as Mr. Armenian brought it up, I'm going to, we're not going to have a number until, let's see where we're going with that, but let me start from them. Let's put 25,000 for Y W C A. Housing Rights 10,000. Home Again L A 10. Glendale Youth Alliance 20. Door of Hope 20. CASP 36. Catholic Charities 20. Essentia 15. A R S 69,000. Armenian Bar Association 20. And A S A 10,000. If I'm not mistaken, the, the CASPs was 34,000 or 16,000 each?
It was 17,000 per school.
17 or 16.
That's what you said.
I, I multiplied it by two and it came to 33,735.
Well, that's why I rounded up to 34.
So why don't I, let me fix my, please change it to, what is it, 32,000, whatever, 30, or round it to 33,000?
34 is the roundup.
34, okay.
Yeah, because it's 33 something is, committee member.
Change the A R S, I mean CASPs to 34,000, please?
Sure. To 34?
Yes, please.
Sure.
And I had how much extra there?
2,000.
2,000. And let's move the 2,000 to, where was it? Add it to Home Again L A.
Okay, thank you. Think I'm going to go with the start, with up and down, go with the CASP that 34,000 rounded up.
I'm sorry, you said 34?
34, yeah, at least will cover the two schools. Some change. Start from the top. A S A, about 10,000. Armenian Bar 20. A R S. I had some different number, two seconds. 65, A R S. Essentia 10. Let's go the Housing Right 10,000. Youth Alliance 20. Sorry, I'm going back and forth.
That's okay.
Okay. Catholic Charities. I'm going to like 25. Put a number and then we can adjust it. Door of Hope. 15. 15. Home Again LA 15. What do I have left?
I think, give me just a second.
Yeah. Some reason it's not totaling it.
Oh, I see why. You have $31,000 left.
31,000, okay. Let's put 20 on the YMCA. Then I have 11 left.
20 on the YWCA?
Yes. 20, 11,000 left, 11. Let's put 5,000, make that 70 to ARS. In the balance, please add it on the Catholic Charities. Is it correct? Yeah?
Chair of the decision, may I?
Yes.
Since all of us almost recommended for the YWCA to be less than their minimum requirement, and since we had that interview, I'm just suggesting if possible, can we get them on the phone and confirm would they take less or 46 or nothing? Just to know so we don't have to use our allocations, change it later on. If they will be okay to take less than 46,000, if not, might as well just
And maintain the program.
And maintain the program.
On some level.
Or if not, we can just right now take that fund and allocate it to other agencies.
Okay, is that possible?
Committee member Gabrielle, what number was that again that they could take less than?
Was it 6,020?
They basically said if they, their minimum, without the minimum, they would have to lay off the person running the program.
But last year they were given.
I know, but that's not what they answered today.
That's not what I asked.
Even though we asked twice, I asked, you asked. So that's why we're trying to confirm.
I think they're calling. They're calling. We can talk about everything else until we get an answer. Anybody else has any suggestions, corrections?
Yeah, if I can just round off mine to be consistent. So the Armenian Bar would be at 21. And CASP would be at 34. Thank you.
I'm so sorry, my eyes are not good. Do you mind, can you, we don't need to see the names?
Get larger?
Yes.
Sure.
Even with
Do you need to see the minimum to accept or no?
No.
Minimums, you don't need.
We have it on the spreadsheet here.
Yeah.
Can you also show the average, yeah? Current funding would be helpful too, actually, sorry.
No problem.
We just want to make sure that you know what you're doing, playing with Excel. Besting you.
Okay, is that better?
Yes, thank you so much.
No problem.
I mean, we're pretty close on AESA.
On before, actually, I think last year I brought it up too. I know we started with this average column, but I haven't been very much fond of it from day one. I think it's more of like our twin said, there's lies, there are damn lies, and there's statistics. I don't, I'm not comfortable with having averages. I think it's better for us just to come to understanding somehow versus that average, it doesn't make I mean, it does make sense, but in some cases, it doesn't.
I mean, it's just a guide. I don't think we've ever said, take the average, right?
I hope not.
We never depended on the average numbers.
Let me see if I can be helpful on any of my colleagues to change some of mine to even out.
Like Housing Rights, we're, I mean, we're all at 10. Do we want to just like highlight those?
Yeah.
I think that might be the only one.
I didn't, oh, Glendale Youth Alliance, I might, oh, no, it's not me.
If I can ask for a bit of information or probably make some suggestions on why I've allocated the way I have. So for Essentia, their program is a very important program, but I believe that they do have funding from elsewhere, and if maybe the staff can let us know. And that's why I gave them the minimum of 10,000 because them and also Door of Hope has a lot of funding elsewhere. These are not my numbers, don't reflect how I value the services that they provide, only whether they need it from CDBG or not.
Thank you, Chair of the decision, members of the committee. So as Mr. Marcel Mitchell told us during his interview, that Essentia is the lead agency for homeless individuals in Glendale. So they oversee our, the City of Glendale CES system, CES stands for Coordinated Entry System. And they are our lead in our COC. They do have a number of funding sources, but our, the COC allocates, this past year, the COC has allocated 620,000 for the CES reallocation. Another 871,000 for permanent supportive housing. Those funds are used to pay rent for homeless individuals that are part of their permanent supportive housing program. They were also awarded 200,000 from Adam Schiff's office this year for a two-year program for, to conduct outreach in Glendale in surrounding areas. An additional 80,000 in Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program. Part of that 80,000 divided into two different programs, 60,000 being outreach and 20,000 being for one resident advisor for their shelter. An additional 33,000 for the Emergency Solutions Grant Program for shelter operations. And 400,000 for, that's a 24-month grant to employ three case managers as part of the Housing Homeless Incentive Program. So these are just some of the funds that they were awarded through our COC program this past year.
Oh, okay.
In addition to different private donations as well as different, similar contracts they have with other cities in the area.
That's, that's my thinking when I allocated 10,000 instead of anything higher only because I think they're getting funding, their services are very important, but I don't know if I would like to dedicate more than that from our limited budget.
I have a question.
Thank you, yes.
I just, I wonder if you have at your fingertips that type of information for, or the lack of that type of funding support for any of the other organizations?
These are large organizations and they have different funding sources, and I can tell you Catholic Charities is a nationwide organization, so they have funding through HUD, Urban Development, federal, state, and local dollars, as well as City of LA. So I don't have that information, but Catholic Charities, they only have one grant that they apply for, which is the CDBG grant through the city, through the City of Glendale. In terms of Door of Hope, I believe Door of Hope has applied for one grant for domestic violence individuals through our homeless incentive program. But I can follow up and find out how much that is.
But they do, I recall, I think it was when I was visiting them, that they actually have maybe private funding, like sponsorship from a family?
Yeah.
Is that the correct organization that I'm thinking about?
Yes, Door of Hope is mainly operated by private donations.
And that was another reason why my allocation to Door of Hope was not as high as the value of their services would justify.
Okay, thank you. Did I answer your question? Any other suggestions? Who wants to drive the boat?
Chair of the decision. Our committee member, Kenyos Gabrielle, had requested to see a pie chart just to get an idea before you continue how the, each program, where we stand with the different programs and classifications. So for instance, legal services, youth programming, adult counseling, homeless services is all there, and you see that homeless services is funded at, I believe, 44%. And legal services is at 11. Youth programming currently is at 23%. This is the request, basically. And adult counseling is at 22%. So this is what it looks like with the requested amounts, the original requested amounts.
Current? Request. Thank you, interesting. Yeah. Yeah. Go back to the charge. Thank you for that report.
Can we make that chart part of the record?
We can.
I was going to, I was going to suggest we're pretty close on AESA. Maybe we can tackle that one next.
Four of us are at 10. Gabrielle Young is at 12.
Average says it all.
Average says 10, four.
We can do 10.
10?
I'm sorry, committee. I wasn't, I was, okay. No. I wasn't sure if I had heard correctly. Thank you for clarifying.
This, the next one is the Bar Association.
I'm willing to change.
Everybody's in 20s.
I'm willing to change it to 20 to reach a consensus.
Okay. Have a consensus. See who are next. Okay, we have CASP, everybody, two schools. Gabrielle is in one. Who's this? Door of Hope. Everybody is in 20. Me and Ms. Manoukian are in the 15.
Sorry, which one are you talking about?
Door of Hope. Everybody's on the 20, we're on the 15. Trying to see which one is, we are closer to each other. We have Youth Alliance, three of us are on 20.
I mean, I'm willing to come down to the average of 18 if that
For which one?
Helps consensus, Door of Hope.
Door of Hope, 18. Oh, okay, you're 20.
If not, I mean, we can do
You can average it out.
We can, I'm willing to come down to 15 as well. If the others want to go to 15. So I don't know where others stand. Don't change it yet, just.
Speak up, anybody?
Anybody willing to consider lowering their, on Essentia based on the report?
You know, I'll do that, I'll do that. I'll drop the Essentia from 15 to 10. I wouldn't want to touch the Door of Hope.
I can, I'm willing to go from 20 to 15. I mean, I, if we, if we could, but you're already at 13. I don't, I'm just
13 is the average.
Is the average, yeah. So you want to 15, 20, and 3, the majority is going for 10. Well, we can go from 20 to 15. I didn't know that we had to change our numbers in order to get there. You know, it's like, you can go ahead and change my Armenian engineers then to 10.
Chair of the decision, members of the committee, you don't have to. I mean, it's up to you as a committee how you want to do it, but this is supposed to be a guide. It's not intended to be used to match. If you guys, if the committee wants to come to a consensus and everybody agree on a number, you're welcome to change it. But if you don't want to, you don't have to. Just keep in mind that at the end, it's only one motion that you could approve. So you have to somehow come to a consensus if you all want to approve that motion, but you can come to a consensus to, let's say, do an average if nobody wants to adjust their numbers and just go with what the average is or some other number that you feel comfortable. But you don't personally have to change your numbers if you don't want to.
I, I think on this, we, this was originally like a worksheet
Right.
for us. So I think what would be good is, number one, for the record, record what everyone put in originally. And then what we're doing here is just trying to get to a consensus on a end result.
That's what I thought, that's why I hadn't. May I ask, since I see consensus for Catholic charities in the 31, 35, 40, and not the 20 and 21 are the minority, can we bring up Catholic charities? And I'm, I'm willing to go down on that one.
Want to go down instead of up?
I'm at 40, so I'm willing to go down into the 30s depending on where you guys land.
I'm not willing to do that at this moment because I think numbers are going to change. I'm waiting for the YWCA, as I originally said in my comment. If we end up zeroing out on YWCA because of whatever they said previously, then I would be taking that, those funds and reallocating to Catholic. So I'm not there yet on Catholic. I'm not saying I'm not willing to consider it. I'm not there right now because I want to see where the other ones land.
Okay.
Chair of the decision, members of the advisory committee, committee member Armenian, we did get an email from, from YWCA, and they are willing to accept anything that the we are grateful for any grant amount the esteemed committee will provide for us, for our work.
I would hate to not fund that program, the YWCA's domestic violence program.
Agree.
Me too.
I mean, I don't think, I don't think any one of us like to cut any one of the organizations any dollar as much as is humanly possible, unfortunately.
It was just what they said.
Yeah, so I mean, for now, given that answer, I would stay where I'm at with YWCA. So we'll get to that when we get to it. At least it answers the question as related for me with whether or not there's additional funds for Catholics, so certainly not from YWCA because I don't want to cut it. But maybe we can at least solidify some of the other, because I think on Catholic, we have a wider range of proposals, whereas like Home Again, we're very close within a few thousand dollars. Maybe we can solidify those and see where we go.
To, again, to bring things to a consensus, I'm willing to decrease my Catholic charities from 40 to 35 and add five to Home Again, which will bring that, both lines closer together.
I think 15.
Yeah, I had a thousand, I hadn't applied yet, so let's keep Home Again to 15 until, I may need that one thousand somewhere.
If I'm the only one with the Home Again, the 12, let's make that 12, 15. If I'm the only one with the Home Again, the twelve, let's make that twelve fifteen. Since that's five thousand, who I allocate for now?
So we have consensus on Home Again?
We have consensus in the fifteen. Everybody's okay, don't want to change anything.
The other one we're close is Glendale Youth Alliance, yeah.
Youth Alliance, we have twenty, fifteen, and ten.
I, I was going to ask from the staff, is, is Glendale Youth Alliance another organization that will get funding from the city's budget?
Chair of the DCian, members of the commission, basically, there are two full-time employees that are allocated to the general fund in the amount of about less than three hundred thousand. That's the executive director, Ms. Gregorian, who was here, and a principal accounting technician. So that's the only general fund being used for the program. GY, about eighty, eighty-five percent of it fully funded by grants. So they have six full-time employees and a number of hourly employees that are case managers, operating the program through various different youth programs. Let it be the one-stop-shop operator at the Vidua Job Center, the great program, which is a enterprise program, and the LA County grants that they receive every summer for their youth employment training program.
Only if you look at it that way, almost every organization, they have access of different funding sources, with a variety of different organizations or individual donations. But then again, which one has a lot more money in their budget and actually spending it, different story. Or saving it for the future. Door of Hope, we have twenty, 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 fifteen, and fifteen.
Casps, we have three, thirty-four is one sixteen. Sixteen is less than the total school, although pretty close. So I think it comes down to how many schools we want to fund at, which is where the thirty-four is coming from.
Currently, I see that there is already consensus. I mean, I, to go to fund two schools, so.
That's what, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't make, starts anything, but we have been funding them for at least two schools, not three. It'd be like forty-eight thousand if I was taking, so, you know, at least that, two schools that, that we can fund. It's a fair, fair number out of the four that we used to.
Yeah, I would hate to see that program reduced to one school, because I think that this is one of the only programs that takes children out who may be heading to at-risk and gives them clinical and group counseling. I don't think we have something like that in any of the other programs.
It's prevention of mental health, that will be the other agencies handling it.
Really great program.
Prevention.
I mean, I'd like to stay at two schools, not go down.
Yeah, minimum.
And I think the majority has it, so, yes, I mean, well, the consensus I see is two schools.
Are you, I'm sorry, are you saying you want me to change your number, or just that, no, right?
Again, you, yes, but where would I take it from? I don't know, I have to change.
No, you don't have to. May, may I recommend, may I recommend that if you come to a consensus, you don't all have to have the same numbers up there, but once you come to a consensus, do you feel comfortable with us putting a number under, in the recommended column?
Yes.
At this point? Instead of highlighting them to say, exactly.
Yeah.
So if you can come to a consensus, we could just, on a number, we could just put it in the recommended column.
I think that's what we did in the past, actually, rather than changing everyone's
I believe in the past, we have changed it, but I do remember Committee Member Kinyonis Gabrielian mentioning this at the last meeting as well, that she doesn't feel comfortable necessarily changing her numbers, but she could come to a consensus and agree on an amount.
Okay, thank you, yes, that, that is a good, great suggestion. So I guess we can, we could do the same thing.
Iris, if you could put the thirty-four there, thank you. Right? That's what you, you had, okay.
Then with that, with that, we can also probably put the number one with ESA. We're all close to. Who else we have here? Those Catholic charities, you know, we're all over the place. Essentia. We have ten, ten, fifteen, ten, and fifteen. If I go up, Essentia.
I'm okay with, with the average of twelve.
Yeah, we can try that.
Or Essentia?
For starting, at least.
Essentia, twelve.
I, I'm okay with the average. I'm one of the lower ones, but I don't, I can't speak for everybody.
I see.
Iris, can you change my sixty-nine on the ARS and add that two thousand to, to seventy-one?
Then I'll apply my one thousand to the ARS as well.
That's a sixty-five is the average, no, on that one.
What about Door of Hope? We're pretty close on that one, within five.
I guess, yeah. May I?
Yes.
I'll add my five thousand to Catholic charities.
Five thousand to Catholic charities, okay. What do I, that I need to change? Fifteen. Twelve.
May, may I say one thing?
Yes, please.
Oh.
Is your mic on?
Sorry, my, my mic, thank you. I'm just trying to, you know, remember the, who we serve and who the different organizations serve, and I know that we have a different community between ARS and Catholic charities. And I know that last year, we gave Catholic charities thirty-five thousand and ARS sixty thousand. And, and we have decreased our funding, and the need has increased. So I just wanted to, to make sure that, you know, we're not unequally or inequitably, inequitably treating both of those organizations that are treating different, you know, different parts of our community. Where we are increasing one and decreasing the other, where the need is actually increased for both of them.
Look at it that way, the need, you're absolutely right, but then the needs at this point, for every one of them, and every single organization has a very valuable work that they do for this community, for our community.
That's why this is so tough.
But then, it's heartbreaking, every time, I say it every year, it's really, truly, it breaks my heart every time that I have to look at these numbers, not by joy, but, but because we have to. And cut somebody, either we have to bite the bullet and cut one or two organizations completely, not fund them at all, so we can be more equitable to other organizations, dollars for bucks, or whatever it's called, to give them more value, what they spend, then that's, that's a different direction that we, we should probably think about.
Say something?
Yes, Mr. Armenian.
I just wanted to disagree a little bit with Committee Member Kinyonis Gabrielian in the following manner. Just because the word Armenian is in the name Armenian Relief Society, ARS doesn't just serve the Armenian community. They actually, their programs, when we visited them, they actually explained, they have five or six different languages where they help immigrant services, for example, of five different cultures coming in. So it's not just them serving the Armenian community. By the same token, I think there are other organizations on here who also, their name, there is no Armenian in their name, but they serve the Armenian community. So I don't think, like, for example, Armenian Bar Association doesn't serve just the Armenian community, it's whoever comes through the door. So I, I don't agree with that sort of characterization. I think all these organizations serve all of the community, regardless of whether one is called Armenian this or that, because I think there's a blend in the community, and I think these organizations all do a lot of work across the board, regardless of whether or not they are kind of an Armenian-based organization, or not an Armenian-based organization. All the organizations, I think, serve across multiple groups within the community. So that's why I don't look at it through that lens. You're in charge, Vice Chair, Manukian.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even notice that he's gone, okay. Well, I would like to make a comment, then I'll ask if anybody else. I, I think that when we're looking at Catholic charities' social services funding requests, I, I don't agree that, you know, considering their request for capital contribution, capital projects should go into our calculation, because they really can't use construction money for social services.
That's not what I was implying, but you're, you're mischaracterizing what I was saying.
No, well, I'm not saying you said it, I'm just saying that I, I don't want to look at it that way, because they're two different, very distinct projects, and I would hate to not give Catholic charities the funding for their social services, having in mind that they, they might get funds for capital improvements. That's my thinking regarding Catholic charities. Anybody else want to speak on that?
Not obviously comparing who they serve, they're just nonprofits that they're serving Glendale community, period. But when I'm looking at the, some of the agencies of what other fundings they have, or what other source of fundings they have, and some are fully, or majority relying on CDBG versus other ones can have a hefty bank accounts and donors, and granted, we're gonna help them as well, but they have other sources. I think Catholic, Catholic charity has a lot more options. If we're comparing just the two at the moment, because that's the subject brought up by Armenian Relief Society and Catholic charities, obviously, Catholic charities have more resources than the Armenian Relief Society does. That's another viewpoint, I would guess, to put it, just to have a say so in that subject. But I think we have few other ones that they're very close, can we at least come to consensus? And the other ones that are much closer, I'm willing to work with my colleagues.
Like which ones?
Well, Door of Hope, it's around the corner, I mean.
I mean, again, Door of Hope is a really great, provides essential services, but I feel like they have certain funding.
That's exactly what I said, like Catholic charities, right?
Yes. Between YWCA and Door of Hope, I feel like YWCA services have farther reach than Door of Hope. But I don't know what your suggestion is in regards, because I, Chairperson of the DCian and I are at fifteen thousand, three of the members are at twenty.
And those are the two that were for domestic violence?
Door of Hope and YWCA.
Okay.
Just, just for reference to the committee members, as you recall, when Door of Hope was up and speaking, the ref, the referrals that come in to Door of Hope are from the YWCA, so that shelter, yeah. So, so basically, the women and children who are fleeing domestic violence situations are referred from YWCA, and they go to Door of Hope.
And what would the BCA's program was for
This is a
counseling
Correct.
versus shelter?
Exactly.
Okay.
And just for another point of reference for the budget for Door of Hope, please take into consideration, this is twenty-four hour care, this is a undisclosed apartment building with fourteen units, and that's why there's staff there twenty-four seven, which brings up the personnel budget.
So then, based on that, what I can do if there is a consensus, I would agree to reduce my allocation to Catholic charities to thirty, and increase Door of Hope to twenty, if this helps reach a consensus.
I'll be okay with a consensus of twenty for Door of Hope.
I'm okay with that.
Yes. What about Catholic charities at thirty?
Thirty, you got thirty-one, thirty-five, forty, twenty, twenty-one.
Where's that coming from, though? We're, we have to decide.
For me, I'm, I'm lowering my thirty-five to thirty.
She's pretty much taking the average, which is twenty-nine thousand now, that changes. Can you change Iris's hers from thirty-five to thirty, please?
I was hoping that we wouldn't have to cut them another five thousand this year.
Yeah, it's
But I, I, maybe we can
The only other thing which is really, I mean, it's a small change in my, not listing my numbers, but the only other way that I can see that giving Catholic charities, ARS, Door of Hope, and Y somewhat, that is just take out Essentia's, knowing Essentia does what it does, and what such a great and valuable work they do, you know, they have, we know that the, basically, resources, financial resources with the city, outside of city, and LA, and everywhere else, there's a pretty large chunk of resources that comes to Essentia. Maybe if we take that number, whatever we have, and look at with, put it down to Catholic charities, or whatever
I think
Let's do that, that dollar to give a little bit more room to play with. So if we take, take away Essentia completely this year. I mean, I, I hate to say that, but no matter how we look at it, we have to cut one or the other in order for, to, one, gain a little bit better, more funds. There's no other way around it.
Well
I see.
What we're doing is we're increasing one, though. We're increasing one, and we're cutting two, including your entry point as your continuum of care for the city. And as a CDBG, I, I can't say that something like homelessness in our city and our own CDBG would cut the entry point for the continuum of care organization here. I, I, I will not be able to support that. I would, I would say if we, what we're doing, well, what we're doing is very difficult.
It is, that, that's the thing.
And I, I understand that, but I, I really
Who you not to cut?
Oh, I can't, I, I can, my vote will be no for cutting Essentia, and I just, I, yeah.
Part of my thinking is what Mr. Polynikin said, which is they are kind of the, the intake manager, so I don't want to marginalize them. Isn't that what you said? managers, so I don't want to marginalize them, isn't that what you said, in terms of the overall system?
Our coordinated entry system for individuals, homeless individuals, and as well as our lead on outreach.
Count, oh, outreach.
On outreach, yeah.
Like on the ground outreach.
We have a number of outreach employees that work with our police department and our community service and park staff, patrolling the streets and making contact with the homeless individuals. I believe the funds that they're requesting will pay for a resident associate. In the past, I know they've applied for an outreach worker, but they have funding for outreach, I believe, for the next 24 months through different funding sources.
And do they get funding from the city directly for those services?
No.
No?
These are just COC funds through federal, our HUD dollars that we apply for.
So I guess my point is, I don't think we should zero them out. We've already brought them down quite a bit over the years, as it is, so I kind of feel like this is a minimal amount.
Chair Avadiscian, committee member Armenian, when you said are these city funds, are you, were you asking, does the city of Glendale allocate the funds through federal funding that we get?
No, no, what I was saying is, is other than CDBG, does the city provide Essencia funding to run the intake system or any other services?
Or stuff like that?
We do.
Not through, not through the general fund.
Measure eight?
Not through city funds or measure eight. We have HUD funds that we...
Separate from CDBG.
Separate from CDBG. HUD funds, ESG funds, as well as state, state funds, and local measure eight.
What is that approximately total to?
HUD.
Overall, non-CDBG funding, like what is it?
About 1.5, looking at the sheet here, you're looking at almost 2 million.
2 million.
That they receive from our programs.
So the city does provide the funding, but it's just not general funds. Essentially, it's similar to federal funds like CDBG, other funding sources, but it is coming from the city.
But I agree with the thought process that as CDBG, to fund them something, even if it's our own minimum, to recognize the importance of the entry point.
I totally agree, and I, I have volunteered for them, the chef, whatever their program was some years ago, my daughter has volunteered for them for over a year or so, worked with them, so I know the value of their work. I know there, it seriously is. I mean, there's no, no organization that doesn't have a value, that it's applying for money, they're not doing some, some sort of a good to some segment of the community. But then again, where do we satisfy, how do we satisfy every single one's needs, you know, without hurting the other? And just giving it, just giving a chop change, sorry to say, just because, to give them something.
I get it.
That I don't, I don't see that really fair either, just, I don't know.
I mean, it, look, there's no great, you know, we've said this before, that, I mean, ideally you would try and eliminate a couple, even though they're all worthwhile, in order to keep others more whole.
Can we, Glendale Youth Alliance, we're pretty close as far as...
I could come down on Glendale Youth Alliance, if there's consensus.
Are you guys okay to go with the average?
This is just 17? I would, I would push for something lower, because I don't...
15?
Personally, I don't, I don't like where the average for YWCA is.
How about 15 for GYC?
I, I agree to that.
15, yeah, I'm okay, I'm 20, yes.
Every year, we be cutting them lower and lower and lower, and this is a great program, and it's one of the cities...
It's a wonderful program, that's all I said. It's a wonderful program, I understand.
Please tell me, show me one of those programs that it's not.
I know, I know, I know.
What do we do?
I think, you know, we, we are all caught in the same place, so I hope our organizations understand that this is part of just where we find ourselves here right now, and I will go with the consensus of, what was it, 50? We already did it, you already did it, all right.
We did that. We have ARS, we have Catholic Charities, and Y right now. If we want to go with ARS with an average, which is 65,000. See where we get...
I can agree to that.
Sorry?
I would like that, yes.
And then Catholic Charities is what, 28,000 average? Can you put those numbers, let's see what's, what's the balance left?
I'm sorry, you want me to put the average?
Yes.
So we're cutting everybody else, but we're giving ARS a $5,000 increase. I guess that's my point. We're cutting everyone else, and we're, and...
No, we just cut it, we just cut it down to the average.
I'm sorry, and everyone that, no, no, the average is what this committee is providing.
Correct.
Yeah, no, no.
I'm looking at the average on the, on the chart of what we had.
Mr. Chair, I was looking at reality, we gave them 60 last year. I'm looking at facts, so, I mean, we could, we could have...
I don't, I don't know what they were asking for last year, but they were asking for 138,000 this year, so this is less than half of what they're asking for, and I don't...
It's also less than their minimum that they asked for substantially, because their minimum was 93,000.
I love the work that Armenian Relief Society does. I guess in the context of things where we find ourselves in this predicament, that was my only observation, that so many of our requesters came up asking for more, because the demand has risen, and we're cutting so many of them, we're cutting all of them.
Iris, can I ask a favor? Can you change the color of 65,000?
Except CASP, and, and we're increasing ARS and cutting all the rest, except CASP. That's, that's the only thing. That's my observation. I'm sorry, what was your question?
No, no, I was asking, Iris, if you can change the color of the 65,000 on the ARS, and also if we can put the average of the YWCA, just to see how much short are we, or how much over are we?
Over.
The YWCA, can you put the average at 27,800?
Sure, at this point, we can put 35,600 for YWCA.
So 7,000, I'm just saying, I know. No, we have 7,800 to allocate. We're not over.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, we could...
If we make, how about this? If we make the YWCA 30,000, and whatever balance is left, give it to Catholic Charities.
I have a different suggestion.
This is...
The YWCA 30,000?
I would add the difference to the Glendale Youth Center.
Sorry, something is off with our formula here.
Yeah.
Can we, yeah, redo that?
We could do that.
Redo the, the formula, just to make sure it's correct. Oh. No, G3.
G3. G11.
We were wrong.
No, I think it has to be G11.
We have 259.
You'd have to come down to, come down on YWCA a little bit.
Yeah, I guess that, then that's a rubie. If we cut 5,000?
No, I think, click on the formula one more time.
What it was, was the, the formula wasn't picking up the first line, so she fixed it to pick up the first line now.
I would suggest, well, if we have to cut, I would suggest to cut the 2,000 from Essencia rather than YWCA.
2,000 from Essencia, make it 10,000 even. And then we have another 24,000 extra.
I apologize, I've been able to hear you well.
She's suggesting, Ms. Manukian, suggesting to take that 2,000 from Essencia in, correct? In, added to Catholic Charities, I guess?
No.
No, no.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, we're over.
Oh, yeah, we're not adding, that's right.
We're over.
Okay, now, okay, I see.
We still have to cut 24,000.
24,000, we have extra.
Which I think that brings us...
We don't have extra, we have to cut...
We're over, we're over.
By 2,740.
I think the YWCA, we have a average.
If we make, well, I don't know.
That's why I'm saying, you have to come down on YWCA is the one where...
The YWCA, if we come down.
I guess, I mean, everybody's okay with it, to make the YWCA 20, what is it?
Come down, 2,400.
27,600.
I'll put a motion to pass this as is the recommended funding.
A second.
I'll take roll call. Committee members, Armenian?
Yes.
Gabrielian?
Yes.
Kinyonas Gabrielian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Manukian?
Yes.
And Chair Avadiscian?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Did you want me to read it out for the record? I'm sorry, I didn't ask.
Please do, yes.
Okay. Okay. Armenian Engineers and Scientists of America, 10,000. Armenian Bar Association, 20,000. Armenian Relief Society of Western USA, 65,000. Essencia, 10,000. Catholic Charities of Los Angeles, 28,400. Community for Armenian Students in Public Schools, 34,000. Door of Hope, 20,000. Glendale Youth Alliance, 15,000. Home Again Los Angeles, 15,000. Housing Rights Center, 10,000. And YWCA of Glendale and Pasadena, 27,600.
That is our recommendation for the committee. The motion is given and passed. What is next, please?
Next is item six, committee staff comments.
Staff, you don't have comments? No, no announcements? Okay, committee members?
Would you like to revisit the decision that we made regarding any changes in the funding in the future as to whether we do a straight percentage, you know, whatever's extra, or whatever we get less than what we funded? It's just an equal addition or subtraction, or in proportion to the amount of funding each organization is receiving?
Okay, so you're suggesting to go back to the, we cannot do that, right? We have to recall that motion in order for us to do a new motion on that subject?
Quite frankly, I would have to check with legal on that.
Okay.
To see what the proper procedure is, and I can, if you'd like me to.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, what is the will of the committee? The staff has to check with the legal in order for us to do anything with this motion that is passed? Either we have to wait for the legal to give us an answer, or leave it as it is, or agree to disagree?
We could also potentially add it to the agenda on Monday.
Or we could do that, yes, if you like, we could do that.
I assume, because...
Because I, I think we might have to give a more specific instruction to staff. For example, I don't know what the differential is going to be, but in a scenario where we're getting a lot less than what we're funding, we have at least two at 15,000, and so if you take a percentage to subtract, and then their, their amount would fall under 10, I think we would have to provide instruction that go to 10, but not below 10, or maybe don't touch it at all.
The instruction is that nothing goes below 10, regardless.
But the 15,000, let's say that they have to be reduced by a certain percentage.
We didn't decide a percentage, we decided on equally divide.
Equally divided, there is no percentage.
We didn't do a percentage.
So if we're 50,000 short, they would, we would take the 50,000, and I think we have two...
Divided by 10.
Not divided by 10, because we have one, two, no, but we have three that we're funding at 10,000, so we wouldn't divide...
One is example, divided by eight, technically.
Exactly. So if the eight would take the 15,000 ones...
But nobody drops below 10.
So then they would have to recalculate.
Chair Avadiscian, members of the advisory committee, just as a point of reference, historically, the numbers have come in a little bit higher than the 1.7 million that we're anticipating. If they were to come in a little bit lower, we're looking at $50,000, but that $50,000 is only 15% of that $50,000. So that being said, you're looking at anywhere between $500 to $900 difference. That's per agency, based off of 10 agencies, not including Housing Rights Center. So it'll be higher or lower than 400 to $900 for the remaining 10.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, that's, that's somewhat was my thought line, that's why I asked to that, give that direction.
It rarely would go into the thousand.
Playing with the percentages.
All right, good to know.
So for clarification, are you still interested in revisiting that item, or are...
No, I would, I'll withdraw my request.
Okay, withdraws, ready? Mr. Gabrielian?
First, I want to thank our staff, like always, you guys come along. Zoom grants, it's great, I love it, it's less paper to carry and lift those boxes. I wish we can, I'm sure, a matter of time, we can enhance it a little bit and have locations and spots for remarks, instead of switching between two applications, just to have our comments next to it, so we can definitely reference that when we're studying for the agencies. And I want to thank today's agencies who came here, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Armenian?
Likewise, thank you to staff for all the work and also for all the help in training us on the Zoom grants, so appreciate that. I second Mr. Gabrielian's comments about potential opportunities for improvement with it, and thank you to my colleagues for the ability to come to consensus. I know it's not easy, and we each have our perspectives on the different organizations, but it's not a reflection of, the dollar amounts are not a reflection of the value we feel, which is, it'll echo what Ms. Manukian said, it's just the reality of trying to deal with the limited funds that we have. Hopefully more will come in and we can, you know, increase it at least a little bit, and then if any funds are returned, we can consider even more on top of that. And I'll also say, as I am termed out from this committee, but I am here today because my replacement decided not to take on the challenge, or couldn't take on the challenge, I should say, so this is probably my last meeting. Hopefully council will find my replacement. If not, I'll just continue serving. So it's been a pleasure serving on this committee for all these years, it's been a pleasure seeing all the great work and supporting all the great work of all these community-based organizations who do, are really the social safety net for our city, and they are what make Glendale special, I think, as a place to live. I know that there's a lot more resources that they are worthy of, so thank you to my committee members, and if I see you on the next one, I see you. If I don't see you, thank you very much, it's been a pleasure serving with you.
We're talking about Monday? You're not going to be here?
Monday, I'll be here.
Okay, then we have, we have time to say goodbye.
This is my social services, goodbye.
Yes, please.
So I, I look forward to seeing you Monday, and that'll be, hopefully, maybe not, not hopefully here, but, you know, you'll be placed in another commission. It's been a pleasure serving with you. I wanted to say thank you because... I wanted to say thank you, because it's been a pleasure serving as chair and getting to know each one of you a lot more and all of these organizations that serve us. And for me personally, it's, it was a beautiful growth experience, and I look forward to serving under you. And I wish you the best of luck. I think that it's, you've been here before, you've been chair before, so I think this is, you're, you're at it again, and I wish you the best. I want to say thank you to staff, but I also want to personally tell all of these organizations that, you know, ditto to what all of you have said. It's not, it's the fact that we have our hands tied with the limited amount of funding, and we do treasure everything that you do, and we hope that you will seek other sources of funding and that you will come back to us over and over again, and hopefully, we'll have more next time. Thank you.
I ask as well, I guess, for last second, I would just, oh, sorry.
It's okay, go ahead.
Sorry, yeah, okay, I'll start it. We leave the best to the last, how about that? Mrs. Past Chair, Mrs. Gabrielian, thank you very much for your leadership for this one last past year, doing what you did. I mean, it's a challenging for all of us. It's a hard, hard work, and pretty challenging and emotional a lot of times because of what we have available and what we can do. Try to help our organizations, to help our community, which is always a hardship. Again, thank you very much, and thank you for all of you, your vote of confidence to voting me in again as a chair. Mrs. Manukian, please.
Thank you. I also want to thank the staff for being knowledgeable, for being informative and being patient with us as we learned the new Zoom Grants way of reviewing applications. I actually really enjoyed not having the papers. And I want to thank my fellow commission members for being so compassionate about what we do and yet having reasonable minds so that we can reach consensus. Thank you.
Thank you. If there is nothing else, see you Monday morning at 8 o'clock sharp, and have a great evening. Thank you, staff, thank you, everyone.
Leaving the binders, right?